Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 17th, 2022 Londonderry Town Council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. It has always been our tradition to have a moment of silence. Tonight's moment of silence is for our first responders here in Londonderry, who we are very grateful for. And with the winter coming up, the additional people who are recognized as first responders, the public works people, who will be out there in the middle of the night making sure all of us are safe in the morning when we get up the drive. Thank you. Okay, so, first thing I'd like to cover off in public comment is that tonight joining our newly named police chief is our newly named captain, Jason Breen. So Captain Breen, Londonderry High School graduate, one of our own. Congratulations.[93.07][93.07](APPLAUSE). I have an agenda item here as public comment. I'll take that first. We did already. We did that before.
Got it.
Okay. Okay. Again, I have an agenda item for energy update. Mr. Speltz, you asked for an agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let the record reflect, I'm waiving the three minutes.
I'm sorry?
Said, "Let the record reflect, I'm waiving the three minutes."
Oh, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So for the record, I'm Mike Speltz, a member of the Energy Efficiency Task Force, and I'm here just to provide the council an update on what we've been up to so far, what we've accomplished, what we recommend for next steps. So, next slide, please. Basically, we have, I'm gonna try to give you a quick thumbnail of what we've been up to, show you a little bit of data on how much energy we're using, look at some strategies to reduce that amount, and then look at next steps. Next slide, please. So, we have assembled a beta, a one-foot-high stack of invoices from the various sources of energy in town, and we included some of the water and gasoline. We've taken a look at, there's been a fair amount of work done already, so we've looked at some of that. We've been listening to a lot of vendors come in, and you see the list of them there. It includes both people that are looking at our brownfield site to potentially install a solar system. In addition, a couple of companies whose business to help us aggregate our electric demand and reduce costs in that way. We can talk about that a little more detail on another slide. And then, look at auditing. Again, a lot of work has been done on auditing, but there may be some additional thing that we can do, because most of it has been in a stovepipe. You know, the schools looked at their stuff, the town has looked at their stuff, but is there a way for us to get some synergies? And then finally, one of the issues with Auburn Road Superfund Fight is, how do we get the power to the grid? Because it's a lot of power, it would involve a three-phase power line, and right now there isn't one in that area, so we took a look at these challenges that that makes for us. Next slide, please. So, I should apologize. I know that when I sit in this chair, we usually get to see beautiful pictures and colorful maps, and that won't be the case tonight, I'm afraid. It's gonna all be numbers and words. So, here's a 40,000-foot view of what we are doing in terms of the top box, of what we're using for energy in those various categories, and on the bottom, what we're spending to acquire that energy. And you can see that on the bottom box there, the big hitters are, highest being electric, followed by natural gas, and then gasoline. Totalling, as near as we can tell, that, you know, our accuracy depends on the accuracy of the information that we were able to gather, over $1.3 million just buying energy in one form or another. Next slide, please. So, as we look at the various schemes for reducing that cost, one way to look at it is using the business technique of return on investment. So, if we could take that $1.6 million and cut it by 4%, or at least avoid the 4% of the costs, I mean, we know that, you know, inflation's up and energy prices are up, but if we could cut that cost by 4%, we would save about $53,000 a year, or if you had an investment that was 10 years, you'd save a half, over a half million dollars. And just by way of a benchmark, the schools have been at this for now since the year 2000, and working in various ways, just piece by piece, the systems, putting in LED lights, but also where they, they have an energy manager on staff that does sort of the behavioral part of this, get people to turn off the lights. And they've saved $8 million over the last 22 years, so definitely an effort that's paid off, you know, for the schools and certainly for the Londonderry taxpayers. So, it would seem that we could do far better than 4%. You know, if we wanted to save $100,000 a year, a million over 10 years, that would put us around 7.5%. Again, doesn't seem like it's an insurmountable mountain to climb. So, this is an old saying, but it's very true, and to remember first, that the cheapest electricity is electricity you don't use. So, like I said, we've done some energy auditing, but there's probably more that we can do so that we make sure that we pick the low-hanging fruit, we spend the money, if we're gonna spend on this, in the right direction to get the most savings. So, audits start out just, you know, with a low cost, high level, and then they progress down to very detailed so that you can actually get to the point of contracting to solve a problem and save money. The task force that had their report in May of 2009 was an excellent effort, and I really think we need to dust that off and look at it, look at the suggestions that the task force made, and then find out whether there isn't some of those that, if we haven't done, that we should do. Next slide, please. So, as we started thinking about energy efficiency, we have the question, efficiency for whom? It's now possible, because of recent legislation that has been passed, that the town can become an energy provider, sort of play the role, half of the role that Eversource plays for us now. Eversource transmits the electricity to the substations around here, it distributes the electricity from substations, that wouldn't change, but we can buy the electricity instead of having Eversource buy it for us. So, that can be done, it could be done for our municipal buildings, but it could also be done for the entire town, if we can, if we see that that makes sense. And again, we'll talk about that in a minute, how we'd go about that. But, you know, obviously, it's a lot more complex if we're gonna involve everybody in town, the businesses, the people, but on the other hand, it creates economies of scale. It makes it so it's more likely that we can actually reduce costs for everybody, if we're willing to put up with the complexity of setting that up. Next slide. So, there are two ways that we can approach solar-electric. Now, I'm bouncing around here a little bit, but because the committee has had to look at a bunch of different things. What I'm looking at right now is just our brownfield site on this slide with figuring out how we could go about funding a project that put a photovoltaic system in there in an effort to reduce our costs. So, the one option that has been very popular, but I think is now, at least as of January 21st, '23, gonna be outdated because of the Inflation Reduction Act and the fact that the town is now eligible for a 30% federal share of the costs of whatever we put in. But if we do a power purchase agreement, it's very straightforward. Somebody else is gonna own those panels, and basically, we are gonna take the savings by paying that person less than what we pay Eversource to, you know, create the savings. And then typically, after they've depreciated for a while, we get an opportunity to buy the panels from an investor, so we're just basically leasing the land that the panels sit on to an investor. I mean, it could be the roof of this building, for that matter. It, you know, it wouldn't have to be up there at the brownfield site. But the advantage is, these investors, they're carrying all the risk, they're taking care of the system, you know, they're covering the maintenance costs, et cetera. We pay by putting a little increment on our bill that goes to them, but hopefully, it's still less than we would be paying Eversource. The other way to do this, that now with the new 30% federal share makes more, make more sense for us, is to own the panels outright, our panels on our land or our roofs. It would mean probably having to borrow, but if we took the money that we were spending on electricity and used it to pay down a loan, and that loan was cheaper monthly-wise than electricity we were buying, then, you know, we would be saving money. And as I said, the cost of project can come down by at least 30% based on the federal share that's gonna kick in. It used to be that it would work for individuals, but it's never been available to municipalities or nonprofits, and that changed with the Inflation Reduction Act. So, the challenge here, and you'll be discussing some of this later tonight.
It wasn't Frank that's...
Yeah. I think it was one of those vendors that we talked to. But the challenge here is to figure out how to go. There's sort of two ways to look at how we could aggregate all of our residents and all of our businesses and industry under an agreement like this. And we could, and that is, to do what we're on the path of doing right now, we have a contract with a property out of, or a company out of Auburn, New Hampshire, called Freedom Energy Logistics. And basically, they come up with a plan for us, get the plan approved by the Public Utilities Commission, and then they become the managers of our power system. And then we pay them, again, a price on electricity that we buy. The other option is this New Hampshire Community Power Coalition. We've met with both of these groups, and they are a nonprofit as opposed to Freedom Energy, which is a for-profit, so you might anticipate getting a little cost advantage there. There's nine towns, 19 towns, one is actually, it's 18 towns and a county that are, Cheshire County, that are involved in this right now. Obviously, they are gonna have some economies of scale, because they got literally tens of thousands of people and businesses that are gonna be doing this. So, either way, we don't have to create a Department of Energy here in the town or in the school district. Both of those solutions would allow that to all happen, sort of off-site turnkey from our point of view. On the other hand, if we wanted to do that, we could. We could hire staff, we could do all this ourself, but I just present that, just to, you know, show the options completely, but I don't think it's a practical option. The Auburn Road landfill solar site, again, I'm bouncing back and forth now between aggregation and the solar site, but I'm trying to get this all in. We've got the land, it is a capped landfill, it has toxic materials in it, the cap is there to keep them where they are and not let rainwater fall on them and wash them anyplace else. But there are techniques that they can use, and we dealt with a company that specializes in this sort of thing, that would be willing to come in and establish a solar facility on the landfill with the cap on it, taking care not to compromise the integrity of the cap. Like I said earlier, it doesn't have three-phase power, so we're talking a million dollars a mile of investment to get three-phase power to that spot. And there's some, we're not really sure what the nearest spot would be to hook up into, so that's an engineering problem that would have to be solved. And then finally, it would be really important that, in this, for this project, we include the school and provide the electricity to the school, because then we'd be sharing this million-dollar investment, and whatever else it is that takes to set it up, among a much broader base than if we just were working on the municipal buildings alone. So, where do we go from here? I think we need to do some more work with the data. The first thing that all these vendors say is, well, how much money are you spending, and how much electricity, water, gas, propane, whatever, are you using? So, like in terms of gasoline, because of the way we do our accounting and buy our gas for the police cars, et cetera, I don't even really know what we're spending on. I know what we're budgeted for gallons or for dollars, but, you know, what is that buying us? So, there's some additional data gathering we need to do. I really recommend that we go back to that 2009 Energy Task Force and look at those recommendations, and that's a very simple thing to do. Get that out, ask the department heads to take a look at it and see if there's things there that make sense, or maybe they didn't make sense then, but they do now, and see, it's all low-hanging fruit. It's fairly low-cost, easy stuff. We need to get involved with an energy auditor and find out what he can do that goes beyond what we've already done. We need to get down to net brass tacks with the three entities that have given us an interest, shown an interest in installing a system up on the brownfield site. We should take, we haven't done much of this yet, but now the state has a program that supports municipalities buying both electric buses and electric vehicles. It would be great to get our kids away from the diesel exhaust, if we could do that, and I think we would save money. We need to involve the staffs more. We've worked with the DPW director and his counterpart over at the schools, but we need to get into some of the nitty-gritty with what they see, because they know, they have a wider vision than we do, and find out what their recommendations are. And then finally, this issue of aggregation, I think is gonna require what they call a senior-led technical team, and frankly, I mean, the town manager and his correspondent, the superintendent over at the SAU, to figure out which way to go on this, because that train is leaving the station. There are a lot of towns that have already got their plans in for aggregation, a few of them have already been approved, and, you know, we ought to get out in front on that. So, the idea here, again, with all this, is just to present you with concrete ideas that we can put dollars and timelines against to figure out how we can save money on energy. And I've got, a couple of the other committee members are here, so I'd like to, if I can, Mr. Chairman, just invite them, see if there's anything they would like to add.
Of course. Brian?
I just want to say, I think that, as a committee, we would like to take a look at both options, Freedom Energy, and I think we need the department heads' involvement, like Mike said, and I just, we kind of want a consensus from the council as to where you think we should go from here. That's kind of what we're looking at, is what direction you guys want us to go in.
So, what I would recommend to the council is, is that we put this on as an agenda item in our next town council meeting, we workshop this, look at what the results were that brought to us, and then decide where we go from here with the task force. The task force, technically, once this is delivered, the task force disbands, perhaps there needs to be a new task force that takes in mind the 2009 report, and that needs, it sounds like it may need to be a smaller committee, but I do believe the next step would be a workshop at our next council meeting.
Sure.
If you all agree.
Yep.
And then let's workshop it out, figure out what to do next, and go forward. The task force may stay in place, it may not stay in place, but we'll make that decision at the next meeting. But this is all great information, we really appreciate it, and appreciate the hard work of all the members of the committee, and thank you, Deb, for leading the committee and getting us to this point so we can continue to move forward.
John, I just want to say that every single one of those committee people worked so hard, and I really think that them staying together is a good idea, because it was a lot of education, a lot of understanding and education, and these people have already there, and I would really hope that the council continues with this vein and using this, the same group because of all the stuff that they've already done. They already have spent a lot of hours, I mean, they're not lying, the books are like this tall of stuff. It is just cra, and I would feel bad for somebody to have to start from square one and read all this stuff all over again, and interview all these people all over again to kind of catch up. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. And the answer?
Any questions for the council, for me?
No, I think we're gonna, I think we'll wait for the workshop and get into it.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Spend the appropriate amount of time on it. Thank you, Mike, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are in public comment. If there's anyone who would like to approach the council and has a public comment, the three-minute limit is back in place. It's been weeks. Oh, Dan, it's been so long.
I know.
Did you bring coffee this time?
I didn't. I brought donuts, though.
Just kidding, of course.
Dan Bouchard-O'Connell Drive, London Derry. I think the task force thing was, is a great idea, but while I was sitting there listening to it, I started thinking about North Fire. We have solar panels up there, right?
I believe so, yes.
But they're not being used.
Oh, they're not?
Or taken apart.
Oh.
So, they're not being used. They're there.
So much for my next question. I wanted to see...
I guess we'll have to find out about this.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be interesting to see, you know, if we do use them, what kind of a savings we're gonna have on them and stuff.
That was a Leeds building, and there was, and we're gonna have to dig into that one to figure that one out, but that probably is tied back to those requirements.
Yeah, but I mean, if it works there, is it possible maybe to put it on Central Fire and South Fire and, you know, try to save the taxpayers some money there?
As you're well aware, like, the roof of this building is over 20 years old.
Oh, I know, I'm not saying, I'm not saying on the roof, you know, but they do have the freestanding ones that you could, they could put up as well.
We've got all this nice green grass out here now.
Perfect place for it. Are you gonna be taking public comment on the Pillsbury Road issue?
I don't know if that's a public hearing. I don't believe it is. It is not a public hearing, so if you want to say something about it, now would be the time.
Okay. I think that when we started with Gilchrist Road, it was kind of opening a can of worms, because now we're looking at Pillsbury Road, where, if I recall correctly, Bob Carr was the town council, town attorney, and Bob Carr always looked out for what was best for this town. And he put those spec, those stipulations in there for a reason. And I looked at the paperwork, and I think the property was valued at roughly $44,000, sold for $15,000. You know, got a good deal out of it. I think if you allow this to happen, I think it's the wrong thing to do, because anybody can come up and say, you know what, I'm retiring, you know, and I'd like to get the max out of my, you know, property, and, you know, what can you do for me? Because I know they're gonna get a lot more if you take those stipulations out. Maybe the thing is, sell it back to the town for the $15,000. And, you know, the butts Nelson Road...
30 seconds.
Use it for that.
Okay. Nope, I hear what you're saying.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, I still got a couple of seconds.
I want to congratulate Chief and Kim. I'm glad he decided to stick around.
That was a good use of time. Ladies and gentlemen, this is public comment. Name and address, please.
Jan Hootalaw, and at 5 Stoney Point Drive, Londonderry.
Thank you.
And I'm here representing some concerns about the election pins that we talked about, our election pin or area. I did get a notice today from Jonathan Kip that he, let me explain, I'm also the chairperson for the Londonderry Republican Committee, so I'm representing about 130 members and probably around 8,000 people that vote Republican, including independents. So, we're not happy with the designation of putting both Democrats and Republicans together in one area. It confuses the voters, they're not happy about it, which it did last time. We would love some discussion, and we do think that a two-pin area is good, at least separate us a lot of our candidates, and we had 47 Republican candidates this last time, which was quite a number. Our concern for their safety in combination, it's difficult for the press when they come up to take photo ops, so typically, what's happened at the trial was that our candidates would go out into the parking area or near the front of the gym, which caused crowding, and I'm sure you didn't want that to happen. It will happen again, most likely. The area wasn't large enough at that time, it probably won't be large enough this time, because this time, at the general election, we will have more people there and more press there, because our candidates are the congressional candidates and the state rep candidates, and they attract the press, and they have staff people come with them. I don't know if there's ever been another incident that's happened before in that area, so why the safety concern? I do, I do think we should have had public comment, and we should be still open to adjusting it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, folks. Jonathan Esposito, 5 Shall We Drive in Londonderry. Just wanted to offer a quick congratulations to the chief and to the captain as well. Appreciate you, folks. As a citizen in town, and also as a representative of the Londonderry Republican Committee, I did wish to speak to the voting pen issue also. I have some significant concerns with the plan as drawn up by town moderator Jonathan Kip. The current plan, as drawn with a white-stripped line to the right of the polling area, does not offer equal access to all candidates and their supporters to have consistent conversational distance between voters entering and leaving the polling location. I do believe that the state RSA requires that they have access to conversational distance to voters leaving the, entering and leaving the polling location, but unfortunately, that access and that constitutional right will only be protected by the town for the folks who are standing most closely to the entrance to the polling location. Those candidates and their supporters, regardless of which side of the political aisle they're on, who are relegated to standing closer to where the turn-in drive is to the parking lot, will not have conversational access to vote, to that stream of voters entering the polling location. I do believe this constitutes the town not appropriately protecting all, everyone's constitutional rights, regardless of which side they vote on, and I do think that a single pen needs to be reconsidered for that purpose. I also would like a single pen to be reconsidered for the purpose that, as a citizen, I kind of lack faith and confidence in the town to appropriately follow up on election day issues. As citizens, my wife and I both raised safety issues. Election Day issues. As citizens, my wife and I both, both raised safety issues that were caused by candidates and political action groups at Old Home Day on both sides of the aisle, because I believe in appropriate behavior for everybody, not just my side. The Old Home Day Committee and the Police Department, I do not feel were responsive to both the vehicular conduct of candidates at Old Home Day, as well as the conduct of those who are screaming in my children's faces with a megaphone about their abortion rights. I understand it's their constitutional right, but you'll, you'll understand if I kind of lack confidence. There was no town follow-up to those incidents that occurred on Old Home Day, and I'm not confident that there will be appropriate town follow-up if there are issues within the pen on Election Day. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I have a safety concern. There is a very small area that leaves access to people being able to talk to people entering. And during the primary, a friend of mine arrived at the polls at 4:45 a.m. to secure that corner that allows access for me to hold signs for myself and a federal senate candidate. I'm concerned about the safety of myself and other people if we are all going to vie for that one little corner. Here's the front of the building, that little corner right there, okay? I believe that the reason why the two separate places were made years ago is because, it's my understanding, according to Greg Carson, that there was a problem that occurred with them all being together. And he got together, the Republican Committee and the Democratic Committee got together and came up with this plan to separate, and it has worked well for many years. I'm curious as to exactly how many incidents there have been that have protected, that have prevented police and fire to be appropriately take care of citizens during the polling times. If there is an incident that occurs within this area, and someone is hurt, or something happens to someone from either party, what is the town's liability for that, where it has been spoken out many times that this is not what we want? So I'm concerned about my personal safety. I have been attacked verbally. I don't trust not to be attacked physically, and I want to know what the liability of the town is.
Anyone else for public comment?
Roger Filio, 3 Hampshire Lane. I am a perennial candidate for state representative, but I didn't speak up fast enough. I actually want to talk about the electricity. Is that okay?
It's public comment, sir.
We have discussed various types of electrical current, solar and wind power and et cetera. Comes to mind to me that one thing we never talk about is the type of storage of some of that, so it can be used later on. And what I have to say is, I worked in a place, the, where we had the, I can't think, the air traffic controllers, okay, right over here in Nashua. And we had a huge room, and when I say room, I mean, probably about a half acre, of just regular car batteries. And there were eight panels of these car batteries, and every seven, every year, they replaced one-seventh of the batteries throughout. And it worked. They could have electricity for quite some time. And recently, when, I belong to an organization, we have a lot of land, and we were approached by a company that builds storage units for electricity, so that when you're, have excess during the summer, for example, they can keep it stored and utilize it when they cannot get solar panels. And I've never heard of anybody else talking about that, so I thought I'd let you know that there is such a possibility out there that allows you to put smaller panel groups various places and then have a storage facility. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Anyone else for public comment?
I'm Maria Barroth, 6 Bridle Path. So I'd just like to support the questions about the additional pens for the election time. But I'm also wondering if there's going to be a discussion. Are you guys planning to reconsider this? Is it your final decision? Because there's a lot of concerns coming from citizens sweetheart today, and I'm sure you got a lot of emails, so I would just like to know if you're planning to talk about it more, reconsider for the upcoming election, or no.
This is not a council decision, so thank you.
Okay, but, you know, it's a general town election where town council overlooks everything that's happening in town, so would town council be willing to talk to the election committee and?
We'll make a statement after public comment is over.
Okay, so thank you for that. My, another question is, just from hearing the comments about the electricity, I just found out that the solar panels on the new fire station, the northern fire station, are disconnected. We're trying to save money. Why are these panels not working? Because I'm sure it costs money, whether we're grants or not. It must have cost money to put them there. So right now, we have panels sitting there, not being used. Is it going to happen with the new panels that we're going to install? Because I'm all about savings. We pay a lot of taxes, so if town resources are not being used, that's finally concerning as a taxpayer. So, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none. Ladies and gentlemen, public comment is now closed. So, today the moderator put out his decision for the November 8 election. It was reviewed by the, the town attorney. Town attorney deemed that it meets all the legal requirements of the statute. Under the statute, it is solely the town moderator's decision. The duties of the town council are as follows. The town council needs to provide a polling place. We need to provide the funding for the polling place. We need to provide the security for the polling place, and the emergency services for the polling place. That's everything the town council needs to provide. For a general election such as the midterms, we are expecting over 15,000 people. We will be deploying on shift at times up to 18 police personnel. I will not get into what exactly they'll be doing, but they're out there in various areas to do different things for security around the building. Every election, we are either the first or the second largest polling place in the state of New Hampshire. In many places in the country, we're one of the largest polling places. Our main concern is to provide access to the building for 15,000 people from 6 a.m. to 8 p.m. That's the town council's duty. The town council sits as election officials. The town council opens the election at 6 o'clock in the morning and closes the election at 8 o'clock at night. We are the people who have to sign off on the ballots. We are the people that have to deliver the ballots. The security of the ballots are done with the town council under the supervision and with police escort. Ballots never leave police escort. Workers for the, for the polls generally arrive between 4:30 and 5 o'clock in the morning for a national election. The town council, in general, leaves with the ballots to return them to the vault with the police department and the deputy town clerk, usually at about 3 o'clock in the morning. The polls, the polls close at 8 p.m. So at 3 o'clock in the morning, we usually do that. The moderator and the clerk have to report to the state through the HAVA system. The way New Hampshire works is it's called an open town meeting. We cannot close the meeting until the report and the, goes into the secretary of state through HAVA. Once it goes in through HAVA, there is a, a reporting mechanism that is a hard copy that goes to a regional collection place for the votes. The police escort the town clerk to that location. The town clerk then turns the results over to the secretary of state. At that point, the sun is coming up. So the people who have worked the election have been there for 24 hours. Our purpose as the town council is to support that process. That's our purpose, and to provide a safe polling place. As far as the election area is concerned, we provide it for people. We don't provide for Democrats, Republicans. Moderator provides it for people. What the moderator is asking, and what everybody is asking, is be kind, be nice. We're one country. We're one people. We're one town. Let's all do this together. Just be nice to each other. That's all we ask. What we ask of the police and the fire department is to make sure that they can have the best absolute response possible. The way if we set up the polls and the way the moderator has decided gives us the absolute best access for emergency and life-saving services. That's where we stand. That's where the council stands on the polling place. The moderator sent out his decision today. The council does not have the authority to overrule the moderator. Moderator makes that decision, and that is by state statute. So with that, we thank you for your comments. They're appreciated. And we're going to move on. So, on to a public hearing. I'll open a motion for resolution 2022-16 to open a public hearing for acceptance of unanticipated revenue under RSA 31:95-b3, Part A, 2022 Homeland Security Grant Endpoint Detection and Response Cybersecurity. Would you make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Public comment, uh, public, excuse me, the public hearing is now open. Mr. Campo.
Yes, so we were able to obtain a grant in order to boost our cybersecurity over at the police department. This is, allows us to purchase an endpoint detection system to assist with preventing any cyber attacks on the police department email system, network, and it helps remediate the threats as well. The total amount is for $43,486.
Questions? Any questions? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Any questions on resolution 2022-16?
I do have a question. This is the IT grant, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So, without divulging any confidential information or whatever, I did read through the packet, and I noticed that there were some terms and conditions that we need to meet to be compliant and to, for the grant. Are those terms and conditions where they met? And also, was there any additional cost to, to us to meet those needs, or terms and conditions?
So to meet the terms and conditions, there should not be any additional costs. In terms of additional costs, though, there is the fee going forward for this service and the cloud protection that it provides as well.
Okay.
The terms and conditions, they, it's difficult to say that they'll be met. By that, I mean, they're ongoing. It's not day one, everything's all set. In six months from now, we still have to make sure that we're meeting all those terms and conditions. They will be met, but as of right now, they're not, because they haven't occurred yet, if that makes sense.
Is there a sunset period of like, when these?
We have until August 31st of 2025 to spend these funds. In talking with the IT individual at the police department, I don't think that will be an issue. They're going to be trying to get this up and going right away. As we're all aware, cybersecurity is one of the larger threats and concerns for the town, for not just the town, everyone. And this will help us remediate threats. I mean, you can't stop them all completely, but this will help, and it'll take off a large chunk of the cost that would otherwise be for the town.
Thank you, thank you.
And just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to amplify that point, while there may be an additional cost going forward, that was one of the items that was specifically increased in the last budget cycle, was cybersecurity, specifically at the police department. And so this is something that, in a general sense, we've been planning for, for some period of time, and this is really just implementing that policy decision that was made at the last budget cycle to further support this important area.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else? Motion in a second. All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Resolution 2022-16 is approved. Next one, resolution 2022-17, Acceptance of Unanticipated Revenue Under RSA 31:95-b3, Section A, Londonderry Police Department Office Highway Grant Safety Grant.
Yes, so the town has been awarded $14,400 with a required match of $3,600. This is for six different projects that vary between essentially a click-it-or-ticket, speed enforcement, and drunk driving, drunk driving situations.
Questions? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there any questions on resolution 2022-17? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to approve 2022-17. So moves, Chairman?
Second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Public hearing is now closed. New business. It appears that Attorney Pansy Arco has requested a release for deed restrictions at 94 Pillsbury Road.
92 Pillsbury.
It says 94 on mine.
92 on mine.
My agenda says 90, so it's 92?
It says re 94, but if you read the first paragraph, it says 92.
So it doesn't for 92.
So are we looking for 92 or 94?
94.
94.
94, so that's what I've got on my agenda here, okay.
All right.
There you go.
Okay.
I just name and address, and if you're going to speak, that would be very helpful for our minutes, please.
Not a problem. My name is Patricia Pansy Arco. I'm an attorney from Bedford. I'm here with my client, Cheryl Tepper. Her husband Mark is in the audience tonight.
And they reside here at?
They reside at 94 Pillsbury.
94 Pillsbury. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. And we're here, Mr. Chairman, to request that the board consider releasing two covenants that are in a deed to a parcel of land that my clients purchased from the town in 2001. And I think it might be helpful if, if you could put those up. Mike, the drawings help a lot to understand the geography here. When my clients first moved to Londonderry in 1988, they acquired 92 Pillsbury Road, which you can see, it's outside the green, it's wrapped around there. It was 1.19 acres of land. Oh, wait a minute, 1.81. They acquired 94 in 88. In 92, they acquired in 1990. That was another 1.19 acres of land. They abut each other. They both have frontage on Pillsbury Road. When they moved into Londonderry, their desire, of course, was to run a greenhouse, which they did by combining the use of the two lots, but they did not merge them. And as they began to grow, they found they needed more land. In 2000, I believe, they approached the town about buying a piece of land that backed up to the rear boundary of the two lots that they owned on Pillsbury. That piece of land was part of a 47-acre parcel that the town had acquired from CCM, Inc. It actually is part of the Nelson Field parcel. And the town bought that land from CCM for $22,000 in 1973. Most of that land has been developed for recreational purposes up at Nelson Field, accessed by Nelson Road. But the parcel that my clients approached the town about was not usable for recreation. But the parcel that my clients approached the town about was not usable for recreation. It's very steep and I don't know if you have GIS that you can put up, Mike, that would show how steep it is. It's also very rocky and ledgy, but it worked fine for my clients to grow mum plants at that time, which they have continued to do, uh, for about 20 years after they acquired it. So, when the town acquired the 47 acres from CCM, they, uh, got a grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund to acquire the parcel, perhaps to improve it. I don't have the, the details of where those funds were invested, but nonetheless, the restriction was that they had, had to be invested for recreational purposes. But by the time my clients approached the town about buying this leftover piece, the town had determined the piece was not, um, it wasn't feasible to use it for recreational purposes because of how steep it was and how rocky it was. So, um, what they did is they worked with Troy Brown, who used to be the town administrator at the time, and they got all the approvals from the feds to release this from land in conserva, water conservation. And the purchase price they paid was reinvested in the, in the West Road Fields in the, in the western part of town. When the town acquired the parcel from CCM, it's important to remember there were no deed restrictions on, in, in binding the town on how that 47 acres was to be used. But the town knew that they wanted to use it for the recreational purposes. At that, so at that time, there were no existing restrictions other than those imposed by the feds with the carrot stick. We'll give you the money if you use it in a certain way. But it was fully released from that program. The tax card shows, although that wasn't the purchase price, that the value of the property, $7,500, on my client's tax card was the value of the parcel when they bought it. But they did pay $15,000 to the town to buy this piece and they invested approximately $6,000. They do, don't have the receipts, but they recall it was about $6,000 to subdivide it from the Nelson Road Fields so that they could acquire it. One condition was that it be merged with 94, which made it a little bit murky to some extent because at the last minute, when they came to the town council at that time, I believe, to have it approved, um, I believe it was Mr. Greco and that was the only record we have. We don't have any minutes. We've looked for Kirby to find those, but there is no further insight on this. Uh, he moved that they impose a restriction that this parcel remain restricted to agricultural use and there be a 50-foot buffer imposed around the perimeter of this parcel, which was landlocked to begin with, between this parcel and the abutting sites. So, my clients being young, needing to buy this piece of property because to run their business, they agreed to it. It was last minute. Mr. Plant never brought it up. Troy Brown never brought it up, nor did the federal government, when they released it from the program, require that this parcel remain restricted. But nonetheless, it moved forward. There is no reasoning for these being in there. There is no public purpose served by restricting this to growing mums, how my clients have used it for 20 years, other than at that time, they didn't think forward that perhaps there may come a time in their lives when they would be looking to retire and deciding where to leave their assets. And they now have a parcel of land in the back that's merged with a front parcel, partially restricted, if you dig out the old lot line, to this agricultural use. And the industry has changed. It diminishes the value of the parcel and they're looking to retire. They're here to ask the, the town council if those restrictions can be released from their deed. I think it's important to note and what I want to mention also is at no time have they ever requested it be treated differently for taxation. For the 21 years they've owned it, they've paid the full tax rate on this, this eight-acre parcel to the rear. When I contacted, um, I did call the assessor today and I asked her if this was to be put in current use at any time, what would that have made for a difference in taxes over the 21 years? It's presently valued, the backland, the excess acreage, at $80,000. She said the valuation, if it was in current use, would be about $1,000. Now, that's a big disparity, that they have been paying their taxes all this year at the 21 years at full rate. But the prob-
Name of the assessor? But we don't have a female assessor, so I want to know who it was.
It was the assessor's assistant. She was very nice. I did not bind her to it. I told her the property.
I'm just curious, because since we don't have a female assessor, I wanted to know who it was.
I think it was Adelaide, is that her name?
Close. It's eight, probably.
It's, it's on the website.
Yeah.
Um, whoever it was in the department this morning. All the properties that surround this parcel are residential, with the exception of the FAA parcel where the FAA station is. They're all residential parcels. The underlying zoning is AR1. You, you can have agricultural in AR1, you can have residential, cemeteries, public buildings, public utilities, churches, and bed and breakfast. But they're only allowed on that eight-acre parcel as it stands with this deed restriction to use the property agricultural and then maintain a 50-foot setback from all surrounding parcels, even though other people in the neighborhood that are similarly situated only have to meet a 15-foot setback. They presently are, um, still running their greenhouse, but at the time they started out, unlike now, there was no Home Depot. They didn't sell perennials and annuals in mums at the grocery store. The competition has changed and they have a property that's in the middle of a residential area, a residentially-used area, I should say, all zoned AR1. They have a handful of cash-and-carry customers presently and they have a couple of steady wholesale accounts where they bring their planting. But they are getting to the age where their kids are grown and they're looking to retire. They have three full-time employees, including themselves, and two part-timers. They have a really hard time getting people to work because market basket pays more. The parcel is too small for a farm. It's only eight acres. And they cannot compete with the big wholesalers that supply Home Depot and supply the grocery stores because their employees are human, they're not robots. So, it makes it very, very difficult to have a property where the restriction is agricultural when agricultural is not as economically viable as it was when they acquired this parcel. So, for that reason, I, it is sad. People aren't interested in small gardening projects like they were back then. And this restriction substantially diminishes the value and the use of their land, the land, the only thing they have to leave to their two daughters. Since there really is no corresponding public benefit, at least that I can see unless somebody else can see something else, of restricting this property unnecessarily, they would like to have those restrictions lifted. This is not a conservation easement. It's a very, very unique set of circumstances. And while it's worked fine for them, um, for their working career, it doesn't work anymore. And it kind of leaves like a white elephant in, in the middle of a residentially-used area with a restriction that is really going to make it difficult for any value to be added, to, for anybody to see any value in this land. So, that's why we are here, is to look for direction, guidance, and input from you as to how we might be able to pursue that.
Any questions?
Voting on this tonight.
We don't have to vote on it, no. Any questions? So, um, it looks like what we're going to do is we'll look into it.
Okay.
I mean, I will tell you, and just using your math, using your numbers,
Mm-hmm.
Um, we sold the land for $15,000.
Yes.
If they sold it today, it would be worth $1,040,000.
Eight acres landlocked?
Well, 13 acres total.
13 acres?
Well, according to the assessor's database, this is the one I'm using, if they sold the home and their land, that would leave a 13-acre parcel open.
They have, they already owned the 1.8, 1.8 that the house was on. That's not restricted, but a condition of this arrangement was that they be merged. I would argue that restriction does not apply to their home. It only applies to the eight acres to the rear.
So, if they're merged, then now you have access to Pillsbury Road,
Yes.
which opens up the eight acres, which opens it up to development of all 13 acres.
There's no 13 there. Is it the 13 total?
The assessor's database says that there's 11.3 and theirs is 1.2, so maybe it's 12 and a half.
Okay.
So, if you're opening up that land completely, you'd have to go through the planning board and the zoning board and everything else. That's an area that can be opened up to build homes for 13, 12 to 13 acres.
I guess what I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, is they have no present plan at all. That land is extremely steep and if you can see it on the topography, it's rocky, it's ledge, and they've had to actually terrace it because it wasn't cost-effective to excavate anything more, to do more agricultural work there. The soils are not conducive to that. They have no present plans, but it's very difficult to sell a piece of property when you have a, a deed restriction on a, on part of your property and you also have enhanced setbacks. And what public's purpose, I'd like to find out, is what they serve.
Well, all I'm going to say tonight is,
Okay.
is that it gives them an opportunity for resale of that property. And in today's real estate market, that's many, many hundreds of thousands of dollar homes that are very attractive for everybody to buy here in the town of Londonderry today. So, that does open that opportunity. So, that's something we'll look at and we'll take into consideration.
Okay. And one question I would like to make a request at the time is they did do an appraisal at that time. They said it appraised at $44,000 and they paid $15,000 for it. I'd like to see if we could get a copy of that appraisal, Mr. Chairman, because I'm finding that hard to understand, too, if, if that's available.
We can take a look at it. Certainly, or that we'll find anything from 1988.
Right. Uh, we, we've got, uh, the electronic files. We've got the, uh, some old paper files, is my belief.
We can check, but I, I don't, you know, I don't know that we're going to. I will tell you, when we've looked for things from 1980s, we haven't been very successful.
And Mr. Chairman, one, one, um, uh, observation. So, I, I think the council's suggestion that we look into this is justified. Um, frankly, coming into tonight, um, I was, I was, I'm here, as the council's here, to hear Attorney Pansiarko's pitch. Um, uh, one, or I guess two things that come to my mind are, you know, this is in proximity to the Max parcel that we just acquired. And one of the reasons that we did that was to protect the larger wellhead protection area in this, in this larger vicinity.
And that's true. Thanks for bringing that up.
So, I think that's, that's important to keep in mind. The other thing I would, um, uh, point out, and I believe there's a wellhead centered on the Southview condominiums here that embraces, if not all, a good portion of this parcel. Um, you know, the other, I think some of the comments, uh, and again, I don't, you know, I don't want to influence the council one way or the other, but I think the council should be mindful of the fact that, um, the town holds conservation restrictions, uh, and other restrictions that, that do not rise to that level on any number of parcels around town. And, um, I, you know, the, the suggestion that, well, we shouldn't make it a regular, regular habit to release restrictions that were granted and relied upon, I, I think is, is a good one. Um, so those would be the concerns that I have, Mr. Chairman. I think the 35 Gilchrist thing is, is in a league of its own. Um, but, but I would be, uh, concerned that we, um, we release, as I've said in, in that context, that we release, uh, restrictions, not only conservation restrictions, but any restrictions, um, only, uh, in, in unusual circumstances.
Considering the way the voters have voted around conservation in this community over the last 20 years, I would tend to agree. But happy to look at it.
Yes, and I wouldn't characterize it as a conservation restriction. It's really a use restriction because there's other uses in the agricultural district that they can't use that backland for at all.
And I would agree. I would, I would not characterize it as a conservation restriction, but it is a restriction, um, uh, and it's held by the town.
Yeah.
I still talk to Mr. Greco, so I'll see if he recalls what it was.
That would be great. Any insight that can be provided. And I do have a complete copy of the file from the Land and Conservation Group up, um, from DREAD, so I can send that on if you're so inclined to want to look at it. It's kind of dense.
I, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, it said something about a warrant. Is it possible to get a copy of the warrant that actually was pub-pushed to the people? When I was reading the document, it, it said something about a warrant.
About a town meeting.
Yeah, we, we, I could certainly investigate that.
I mean, I don't know if we can get, because you said they're old, but I thought things that were put into warrants had to be turned out by a warrant or changed by a warrant.
The minutes for the 80s, uh, town meetings are in the historic section in the library. The minutes are there for the 1980s.
Fantastic.
I don't, I don't know if this is true. I could be wrong.
No, in the historic room, the minutes go all the way back into the 50s.
On a warrant, it can only be changed by a warrant?
I know Kirby looked into it.
So, that would apply here. That was, this would have to go to a town warrant.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good point to look at.
I, I just-
You physically have to go there.
Yeah, that's something we definitely need to look at.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good point.
Even if it's open, it still only has so much frontage because that property is still part of the 94 Pillsbury property.
Yeah, it's all part of it.
Yep.
It's not, it's, was, it's merged now at 94.
Right.
So, okay.
We'll be happy to look into it.
That would be great. So, I'll hear from Mike. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, um, Mr. Wally, Lions Hall Existing Conditions Presentation.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Town Manager. Uh, my name is Dave Wally. I'm the Director of Public Works Municipal Facilities and I am joined tonight with our gentleman Dan Tenney, uh, representing Weston and Sampson. Try to be brief because I'm sure we're all anxious to go watch Yankees wrap up the ALDS tonight. How do I hear they're in rain delay?
Maybe, maybe not, you don't know.
Just a little bit of humor as we, I know we are all long-awaited.
As the former manager of the Boston Red Sox, we'll see what happens.
Uh, the report on our findings with the Lions Hall. Uh, brief history, um, earlier part of this year, um, some concerns and issues started to swirl around with, um, some of the, um, um, structural deficiencies of, of the, uh, formerly, uh, formerly known Lions Hall. And, um, at the same time, um, the Lions Hall membership was also contemplating whether or not it was, um, viable to retain maintenance and upkeep and, and take care of a facility of this age. Some parts of it dating as, as old as 250 years now. So, uh, in June, we were informed from the Lions that they- So, uh, in June, we were informed from the Lions that they did intend to, um, remove themselves from the facility and turn over complete operations and maintenance of the facility to the town of Lunandary. Uh, we, we assumed those duties and responsibilities on September fifth of this year, and we are now paying for, um, electricity and other types of services that are required of a facility of this age. Currently without budgetary numbers for that, but we will, that is something that we'll be talking going forward in the budget cycle coming up, um, the beginning of November. So, um, the numbers that you'll see before you tonight were, uh, challenging, uh, to say the least, to kind of get our heads wrapped around what could be some potential uses for the facility, and not having any real firm concrete understanding as to who will work in the facility, or what use will it be, or what will it become, uh, its, its useful purposeness for the town. That was a challenge. We're in challenging times right now in the marketplace as well, and Dan will speak to some of those, um, issues as well as we go forward in, uh, the presentation tonight. So, we're just looking forward to an open mind. We have three, uh, basic approaches tonight on, um, you know, what, what could be done with the facility, and certainly there are more. There, there's the obvious do-nothing approach, um, and what have you. But we, we try to approach it and give you three options, at least for consideration, and then obviously for lots of future discussions, so that we could then better gear exactly what numbers we need to go after in order to do what is inevitably decided with what we were going to do with the facility. So, that being said, uh, I'll start the presentation with, um, Mr. Tenny. Thank you.
Sure, thank you for, for the forum this evening. Um, we have just a very brief overview slideshow of, of the work we've done and the information we've generated so far. Uh, if we could, uh, see the next slide. Um, just to briefly introduce, uh, who we are. Weston Sampson is a multidisciplinary engineering and architectural firm. Um, I'm part of the facilities group. We have roughly thirty or thirty-five architects and support specialists that do building work. Uh, the rest of the company does all manner of infrastructure, energy, sustainability, environmental consulting. So, I think there, there may be another click on this slide. There we go. Thank you. This is just a slice of, of the services that we bring. So, we're able to evaluate facilities and, and do, uh, do preliminary design, final design, construction with really all of the disciplines that are needed in-house. So, what we've done, uh, next slide, please. Well, this is us, this is the team, very briefly, that has, has worked on the, on the Lions Hall so far. This is just a, a small slice. There are others who've been involved and have given us input. But the key players have been, obviously, our, our management-level principal, me, lead architect, uh, another architect, um, a pair of structural engineers, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers, and hazardous materials specialists. So, what we've done is to, is to look overall at the building, not in, in great detail. No destructive testing or anything was done, but we, we needed to familiarize ourselves with the building to understand what kind of structural systems it had, what condition they were in. General architectural elements, both the exterior, um, you know, obviously very familiar and prominent building, um, in its location, um, how it's laid out inside, how it works, what kind of building systems, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, which it does not have. Code compliance, both building code, we looked briefly at zoning requirements. It's an existing building, so compliance there is, is a, a little more flexible. And accessibility. So, those are the, kind of the big ones that, um, that really give us a picture of the condition of the building and the, um, the opportunities and challenges to redeveloping it. The report that was just handed around has quite a bit more detail that I won't go into about, you know, individual elements of the building and what condition they're in. It's generally in pretty good shape, but it is, uh, as, as Dave pointed out, it's old, parts of it quite old and tired. At present, there is one significant element of structural distress, which is the floor in the main hall, which is sagging considerably at about the back third of, of that area, which appears to be failure of some of the actually more recent structural repairs that were done. Beyond that, uh, for a building of its age, it's, it seems pretty solid. We, we did not do any destructive testing to open up walls or ceilings to see what, you know, might be present there. But the, uh, the visible superstructure in the attic of both the front part of the building, which is newer, and the old original hall are pretty solid. It's got a very interesting, uh, as you can see in that photograph there, very interesting post-and-beam truss arrangement, which I'd never seen quite that arrangement before. Uh, and it seems to be holding up quite well. You can also see in that photo some of the old knob-and-tube wiring, which is, we believe, has all been abandoned and disconnected, but you can never be completely sure of that. So, um, what we did, based on our understanding of the building, was to come up with three scenarios for potential redevelopment. And those are really three somewhat arbitrary, uh, possibilities at this point. One, uh, and, and really, as, as Dave pointed out, based on no clear, uh, understanding of what the building would be used for in the future after the, after the Lions Club has departed. So, these all assume that the basic configuration and usability of the building would stay pretty much the same. Pending, you know, further design, further discussion with the town, a more detailed program, a more precise set of building requirements would come out and might change some of the recommendations that we present here. So, we have three, three scenarios. One is extensive renovations of the building as it is, so essentially restoring it, um, to the greatest possible degree, really with the, with the view of a fifty-year effective lifespan before you have to do that again. That's pretty much the limit of what you can project doing, um, you know, given, given the type of building it is and what we know about the, the kind of maintenance and, and repairs it might need over that time. A second scenario, which is limited renovations, which is really a shorter-term, maybe a ten-to-fifteen year scenario where major repairs are done, but you don't do wholesale replacement of mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems. And it really just brings it up to better condition, uh, but pretty much as is. And then as a, as a reference for, uh, for the first two scenarios, what would a new building, uh, cost to build, to essentially duplicate the spaces that are in there now? And that's scenario number three. So, we developed, uh, cost estimates for those. Again, they are somewhat arbitrary, because we don't have a detailed program that would tell us things about the necessary configuration of rooms, you know, how elaborate a kitchen might be, for instance, whether there, you know, would be classrooms, whether there would be offices, whether, you know, there, there are a lot of unknowns at this point. And those are, are presented, um, I think we can actually go to the next slide, which won't really change what we're, what we're discussing. Thank you. So, these were the, uh, these were the items we looked at. You can see, people, I'm sure, are quite familiar with the building. And in some cases, it's in great condition, and others, as I said earlier, it's tired. And, and a lot of what's in there needs to be renewed. So, the redevelopment scenarios, um, each come with a price tag. Next slide, please. And the comprehensive repairs and renovations is probably the most expensive, and that, that comes with an estimated, uh, bare construction cost, and I'll explain that in a moment, of three-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars per square foot. That's the, the price that you would probably expect to pay to the contractor. That does not cover contingencies, does not cover, um, soft costs that the town would incur in, in redeveloping the, the property, professional fees, some insurances, some, you know, associated costs. There is a more detailed budget in the report that you have, uh, for each of these scenarios. It does include those costs. But again, they are a, an, a useful relative snapshot. I think the, the relative costs of these different approaches are going to stay pretty much the same. But we are in a very uncertain and volatile construction market right now, and, um, it's very difficult to project, sorry, to project prices with any great degree of certainty. It's, it's always sort of black magic anyway, but it's worse now. So, I think anyone who's, uh, even gotten a quote for, for a new roof recently is probably familiar with that. There are material shortages, there are labor shortages, there are, you know, supply chain delays that can be surprising. Garage doors can be hard to get, and they can hold up a project for six months. That kind of thing is happening. So, we don't know when that's going to stabilize. So, these are really not intended as firm prices. These are just a guide to the relative cost of things. So, the next slide, please. So, this is the, the less expensive option, probably, again, probably the least one. That's about a third the cost of a full renovation, but it does not get you a new building. It does not get you a building that's really suitable for the next fifty years. It's going to put things to right. It's going to leave the existing heating, cooling, electrical systems essentially as they are with some, I call, housekeeping upgrades, so that they're, they're clean, they're suitable for use, they're safe, but they're not new. It would also not, uh, provide accessibility to the second floor, which now is lacking. There's only two stairs, there's no lift or elevator. And ADA would require, or NC one-seventy-one would require a lift, uh, to access all areas of the building for, for full compliance. And then the last, uh, scenario is, is demolition and new construction. That's a little bit cheaper than the full renovation. This is a bit deceptive, because, um, it's assuming that you would do this on the same site. This is not really, if we had an alternate site, could we build the same square footage and usability? What would it cost? This is a little bit of a, uh, an artificial comparison, just, just for reference. It's a little bit less money, um, but there may be some associated costs that we don't really know yet, pending a final design, that could be more accurately priced. So, um, that's, that's kind of the overview. What we, what we also outlined were the next steps. So, what would you do if we were to proceed to a more detailed investigation of the building and, uh, a, a beginning of a design that would address a specific set of needs on the part of the town? So, um, what that all adds up to in the end is what we refer to as a basis of design, which is essentially a report that lays out the requirements for the building, the expected configuration of it, probably concept, design, plans, elevations, site plan, depending on the extent of, of site development that is required, cost estimate, permitting requirements, timelines and all. And that then is your, 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 sort of your bible going forward. That would be, um, you know, what we would recommend doing next, um, if, if the town wants to proceed with, with, you know, a more detailed development of, of these, of these scenarios. Um, one, one point to, sorry, very quickly, one point to make is that in any of those scenarios, um, there is hazardous material to be tested for and possibly abated in the building, given its age. There could be almost anything. We know there is vermiculite insulation, which often contains asbestos. There is a pretty healthy population of bats and/or mice upstairs in the attic, so that has to, that's, that's a hazardous building material. There may be other things that haven't been tested for. We would do that in the next phase.
They're just tenants, right?
Bats and mice are tenants.
Yeah. They're the only ones now.
Right, right.
So, what I'm really looking at is if I want to go down the inexpensive route, I'm really looking at one-point-five million.
Probably something in that range. Yeah, when you, when you add in all the associated costs, which, which tend to be, you know, they don't track the dollar figure of construction exactly. And in, in that budget are some assumptions as to the extent of structural repair, for instance, that's one big line item in there, and we'd have to do some more invasive testing to really characterize the work that's needed.
So, the building was built in eighteen sixty-nine. It was relocated in the eighteen-seventies. It has sat in that same site since the eighteen-seventies.
Yeah, looks, it looks like that.
You're saying, all things considered, it's in good shape?
What we can see above the ground, uh, appears to be, we couldn't get under to see the crawl space under the front of the building. It's pretty shallow, um, so we don't...
I know somebody who went under there.
Yeah. I, we need someone who would like to go under there, because I'm not going to.
There's a gentleman in the room that might volunteer again. I don't know.
I don't know that he'll necessarily volunteer again, but he gave us enough information to understand what we were dealing with.
Right, good, good.
Okay, so this is what you, this is what you do every day?
We do this every day, yes. Yeah, and, and there, and there...
What would you do?
It's always different. What would I do?
I, I have an historic building, you know, which is of value to the town.
Sure.
I'm reasonably sure if, you know, demolition is, you know, would be not tenable by most of the, um, longtime residents of the, of the community.
Right.
You know, what's, um, what would you do?
My, my first step, my, my instinct is to preserve the building. I, I like it. It's, it's got, uh, as you can see in that photo of the...
Thank you.
I, I, I'll be, I'll be totally honest on this. I, I love the old post-and-beam framing. That attic over the hall is, you know, pretty unique. The, the challenge, though, is knowing what the town needs the building for, because that really is the key to coming up with a scenario that really, you know, does it right, because you can, uh, quite easily spend a lot of money restoring a building like that. But if, if you don't do it with an eye towards how it's going to be used for the next couple of generations, you may be wasting money. So, that's really, I think, the key. And that's a question I can't answer for myself. I'd love to see that, you know, restored to something like it looked, you know, at some point in the past. That's, that's always an interesting question, too, is what's historically appropriate for a building that's already been altered and moved and used in different ways over the, over the years?
And I, I think, I think to, to, to just add to that, um, you know, that's how we kind of got to where we are now. Uh, the building, you know, had a roofing issue, so it had an issue with the roof, so they quickly put a roof on it. We, you know, had siding issues, so they put vinyl siding on it. They, you know, had an issue with the floor, so we took a stab at one approach. This would actually be the third time that the floors had to have been dealt with, uh, as I understand it. And, you know, and then there's other elements to the building that aren't in concert with the historical value and preservation of it. You have some, um, some concrete blocks that are used in the front for planters and whatnot. So, you have a lot of different, um, types of, um, textures and materials that have been used that take it out of the historic society type of way of looking at things, but nonetheless, the architectural design and view and, and look of the building is, is quite unique and, and should be valued and cherished as it is, as it is in Lunandary. So, um, so that's where we're at the crossroads, is do we just keep dealing with an issue? Uh, and then the other challenge is, is if we're going to open it up, uh, the, you know, that we, the town of Lunandary, are now going to make it a public facility, it, it certainly is going to have to have, fall into other types of compliances that, that all municipal facilities have. So, um, rather than just dealing with one issue as it pops up, um, and some of the mechanical systems in that building are, are aged quite as well. And so, when you have a, a, a building, and I'm, I'm sure Dan can speak to it as well, when you don't have an occupant of a building, and you set the thermostat as low as you can to try and conserve energy, you don't air-condition it, um, you know, a building of that age can also rapid, more rapidly deteriorate in time, um, should we just kind of, you know, move everybody out, set the temperature down, and lock the doors. We are going to winterize the building, just to make sure that nothing does go wrong with freezing pipes and whatnot. But that's where we are at this point in time. So, we're just looking for some general consensus as to where the town views the, uh, the usefulness of the facility and...
Yeah, one second.
...whatnot.
Yeah, I'll just make one statement, and I'll put it back out to the council, is that when this was brought to me initially, someone came to me and they said, you know, the best thing to do is we need to tear this building down. I said to that person, I said, "I'll be happy to buy the, uh, the rail that they'll run you out of town on." So, I don't really see that as, you know, I see this as a, you know, historic building here in town that we need to figure out what to do with. That's at least my opinion. I'll open it to the rest of the council.
Question. Do you know whether or not there's a ceiling on that main hall now that covers up the structure? That's quite interesting.
Yes.
Can that, i- if, if that was refurbished, could we, could we open that ceiling up so people could see the structure and, and the old craftsmanship?
I, I think the quick answer is yes, you could.
Okay.
Because the ceiling that's there now is a couple of feet below probably the original meeting hall ceiling. And there's ductwork and lighting and electrical stuff in there. Now, in the, in the, you know, the limited renovation scenario, we did not assume that that would be taken down.
Okay.
More likely, it would have been, well, it's, it's, it's a little hard to tell, because the, the framing of the attic looks, it's got a barn quality to it.
Yeah.
And if it had been a barn originally, it would not have been finished. It would not have had a ceiling at all.
Yeah, yeah.
So, a little more research might be interesting in that.
Okay.
It does come back to the question of how it's going to be used. Does that, is it kind of an exhibit space, or is it a function hall, or a meeting room, you know, more like this? Or a theater, which, you know, it's been used for with the stage? So, the, the intended use will kind of inform that. Our assumption in the full renovation scenario was that the, we'd take all the insulation out of both ceilings, partly because it's vermiculite in some cases. partly because it's vermiculite in some cases and it's contaminated in others, put a new roof on with the insulation in the roof itself, so that those attics can be warm.
Warm spaces, as you mentioned.
You can put your mechanical equipment up there, there's a lot of space, and that frees up space down below. So, not a complete definitive answer.
Hmm.
A start, a start.
Well, we're only at the starting point.
I found it interesting how you mentioned in your report that some of the beams yet dated back to the 1700s, but it looked like as if they were repurposed as well.
They definitely were. If, if you look at some of the framing, you'll see, you know, like mortises and, and maker, or carpenters' marks, I guess they're properly called, that don't correspond to the way they're put together now. That was very common. You know, nobody, nobody wasted anything back in the, in the 18th century. And if you had one barn coming down, you were gonna use the parts to make another one. And I'm sure that, you know, a really expert architectural historian could go in there and tell you stories upon stories about what that probably was and where it might have come from.
So my question, maybe whoever can answer. What, so with the previous tenants, there was a, there was no, the agreement, the terms of the agreement was that there was no, that they covered all the costs. They, the hall is rented out, it covered the costs of the, of everything, there was no cost to the town. Is that correct?
Under the, the, the most recent iteration of the lease, and I apologize, it's been a while since I've looked at this, but yes, that's my recollection, is that under the most recent iteration, and there were many of them over the forty-five year period, that was the arrangement.
So, being that the building is vacant, that burden, that financial burden now shifts to the town?
Correct.
What, do you have an idea of what that dollar amount is?
We, we do. We, we've begun to price that out in preparation for budget season. Dave really has, has taken the lead on that, but it is, and just to, it's a great question, because in addition to, you know, the soft costs, the, the contingency costs that are associated with the construction, there are other costs that are associated with using this building as a town facility. So those are the carrying costs, the, the electricity, the water, the, the contracts that are associated with that building, the trash, things like that. But then there are also costs that arise based on what are the, what the use of the building is going to be. If it is going to be rented out, there are caught, that there is a, 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 an increased strain on municipal resources that would likely carry a cost with it. And you can begin to imagine a number of different scenarios where that, the, the use of that building is intensified, that, that has associated costs as well.
So as the chairman had...
We could also rent it back to the Lions.
Right, and I, and I would, I would agree where, where... I would agree that we're not in the business of, of rental, and I think that if there's someone else that can do it better than us. But I would be interested to see, and as the chairman had pointed out, we're in the early stages, so I don't want to get too granular, but I would be, during budget season, I'd be interested to see what those numbers are, so we can furnish to the community, you know, here's the cost that it currently is. It was nothing earlier, yes, there's, there might be some improvement costs, but, you know, ideally, we could, we could potentially go back to the original terms and, with the tenant that we had prior. Thank you.
I'm getting texts of people who are volunteering to go under the building.
Go under it.
I guess people want to keep it.
Yeah, I think the report is valuable, and thank you for doing it. I just, I don't, I don't think there's any question in the next step. It has to be that we have to understand what we want to do with this building, and, and that's very apparent to me, whether or not we get a group together of folks from historic society, a few, few people from, you know, that really know building requirements, and then some people from the town that can really get together, you know, group, working group, and kind of get the T's crossed and I's dotted, as far as what we want to do with it. That's the natural next step, I think, so.
Yeah, I, I think those comments are well taken by me, Mr. Vice Chairman. And to the extent the council wants me to organize an effort to ascertain what the community's desires are, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to structure that, as the council would like to see. There's a number of different ways to do it, surveys, charrettes, committees, you name it, we can, we can do it. But it is important, and I think, the, the last thing I would say is I think it's also important that we not rush it. We need to get it right. We are coming into budget season. It is tempting to want to solve this in one fell swoop, but I think that that comes with risks, and, and we should be cautious about that.
Just, just, just the area of where, where it sits is just, sets value historically and just in the center of our town.
Correct.
It's gotta be done correctly.
Correct.
So this falls in line with, I know you were working, I don't know the stage that it's at, the policy for our buildings.
Correct.
And how that's gonna set. So I personally, I'd like to see a real detailed list of what you were just saying, what the expenses are and what the costs were, and I'm sure the Lions have given that to you, broken down as to what they paid and what it costs.
They've been very generous. I should just note for the record, they've been very generous in sharing that information with us. It's been very helpful, you know, they've got, they've gone above and beyond in that way.
No, and, and I think that data is important for the council to look at.
Correct.
And I agree, this is a great historical building. We want to preserve it as well historically as we can. It can be used by the schools as a teaching education, as to, "Look, this beam's exposed. This is how they used to do things." People can actually get educated from this building. It would be nice if they had had the, the lights that they lit up in the attic and dropped down, but I didn't see those there. But, and on your two comparison, I would love to see the full-blown one compared to the limited one, and be more detailed, because some of them, I'm looking at, like, I, I'd just like to see really, this is cost difference, but what actually are you saying, like, is the...
Sure.
So just a stupid, I gotta put my glasses on, sorry. Just to point out one, when you talk about, like, the substructure, the new foundation and slabs, and you say it on both of them, and you say that the quantity is one, but on one, it's 150, and the other one is 75, like, what is the difference? Like, I'd like to see that, so that, you know, we can kind of, like a la carte, you know, we can kind of build my own burger here and say, you know, "This is, this is really important, that slab, so that water isn't going underneath and destroying it anymore." But on the other hand, when you're talking about the stairs, is it import, is it as important to go thi- this higher pri... Do you know what I'm, like?
Sure.
I think it all plays into, into part, so I don't know how much work that would be for you to do, but...
We, we can certainly break it out in, in more detail, but the, the caution I would offer is that, again, without the big picture, it's kind of hard to put them in the right perspective, because what we've done there is, with some of those, you know, large round numbers, the 75,000 or the 150,000, they're a guess, they're an educated guess at this point.
Yeah, 'cause like, I'm looking, for example, you say plumbing, right? It says quantity, 6,355, but...
Right.
On the limited, it's, it's 1,500. Plumbing, what do you mean? Pipes that you're gonna replace? I mean, I don't...
I can, I can definitely give you more detail there, because...
I mean, I'm not looking for, like, detailed, just kind of so I can understand what it means.
Sure.
You know, 'cause I mean, there's a couple of them like that, like this one here, the mechanicals, right?
Yep.
It's, it's saying, you know, again, you get the same number, but one's 10 and the other one's 75, and it's a difference of 400 on one and 63 on the, I mean...
That's a big number, yeah.
Right, I mean, I, I just think that...
Sure.
To make a, to make a good assumption of steps, and yes, what we're gonna use it for comes into play. Personally, I think it should pretty much stay the way it was, but that's my own opinion.
Let us do this, we can, a lot of what's sort of missing there, I think, as you point out, is there is some narrative that kind of says, "This is what we're doing," and then over here is what the cost is.
Yeah, and, and if it could be like this, you know, side by side, when you...
Yeah, yeah.
When you show it to us, just so to go across, it would be a lot...
Sure.
Easier.
And it may be simply, "This includes X and this does not include X." That's a lot of what...
Yeah, yeah, just so, you know, and then maybe we can kind of say, to give you more direction, along with what we want to do with the building, and say, you know, "This is what we would like to spend the money on, because that slab's important."
Yep.
But this, the, you know, the, I don't, I'm making this up, I, I don't know. The, the mechanicals may not be as important...
Right.
At this moment in time.
They're pretty important, but...
But I mean, at this moment in time, the basic...
Right.
Part might be suitable, and then...
Sure.
Put a plan together into how to update it further at a more cost-affordable price, but the building is at least saved...
Right.
And being used and functioning, and, in my thought. And, you know, I, I just have to say, you know, you talk about buildings being left empty and cold. Let's talk about the Morrison House. It's been there since the 1700s, and it doesn't have heat and, or air conditioning, and it's not in bad shape if you go inside of it. So that being, an old build, those old buildings were built to deal with cold...
They, they were, they were.
And heat, and they were built very, very well. I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't have issues, and I think Ann Schamper is in the audience, and she, you know, really should work a lot on, because she knows a lot about this stuff.
Sure.
But thank you for taking the time to do this. It really is important to the town.
Our, our pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question regarding the previous work that was done on the floor. When was that repaired, what timeframe?
2014.
2014, and it's already in disrepair?
One, one portion of it, yeah.
Is there any form of warranty or anything that we can...
We already went down this path, the company's no longer in business.
And I, and I can speak to that as well, Mr. Chairman, is that in New Hampshire, there's the stat, there's both a statute of limitations and a statute of repose. The statute of repose says, even if you weren't aware of a defect and you discovered it, and this is on, in the construction area, after a certain period of time, you can't, you just can't go back and try to recover for damages, even if you weren't aware of them until the floor caved in. And the other thing I would, I would add is, in the context of the floor, I can't remember exactly what the, what the construction cost. It was, I, I think in the $80,000 range, you know, which is a lot of money to you and me, but I can tell you, as somebody who, who reviews the legal bills, it doesn't take very long before an effort to recover $80,000 becomes a question of how much good money do you, you want to throw after bad? And so there would need to be a very careful consideration given to, is this worth the town's effort?
Gotcha.
Dave, I...
Thank you.
The number was closer to 50, wasn't it?
Yeah, I, I actually came across the numbers last week. It was 47,000, north of 47,000 for the, for the abatment, and then it was in the, the change order to add insulation to it for another 2,500, so it was close to the $50,000.
That would be eaten up in a week.
Yeah. So 50,000.
Yeah, I believe what, you know, when they tore that up and everything, you know, we probably should have, there should probably should have been some other things we probably should have done. That's, but what we learned from that was, from the individual that went under the building, is, is that the, the, the original foundation, which is still in place, I think, I, I, in some tongue-in-cheek was, is, "I didn't need a flashlight, because there was plenty of light coming through the foundation for me to be able to see."
Yeah.
Which means, in other words, the water was coming through, the water was running under the building and had, you know, had reset the footings. So that's why the, the, the floor gave out. And for those that don't know, the floor is part of what holds the sides up. So that's why we, we have a problem. So, all right, well, we're gonna get into this in budget. We're probably going to have a very serious discussion about whether it goes on the warrant or doesn't go on the warrant for the voters to vote. That'd be one way we'd find out whether or not the community wants to fix it or not. But I don't know whether it will or it won't, but we will have a very serious discussion about it and, and bring it to a head.
Great.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item, Extension Lancaster Drive Grant Agreement. We don't have a notary here tonight, so if I have to sign this, I'll commit to town hall and sign it.
I'm a notary.
You're also a council chairman voting, so a council person voting on the same thing, so I don't think so.
Mr. Chairman, very, very quickly, this is, and this can be signed after the fact, this is...
Something not working?
Mr. Chairman, this is really just some housekeeping. The Lancaster Drive project, as I previously reported...
We're having a meeting, sir.
My apologies, Chairman, my apologies.
Yeah, we're having a meeting. Take it outside.
Mr. Chairman, and this is really some housekeeping.
Sir, we're having a meeting. Take your comments outside if you want to talk to somebody.
The Lancaster Drive project, an unmitigated success, I'm happy to report, as, as I've discussed with you before. We have successfully brought drinking water out to those contaminated wells for residences in, in the Lancaster Drive area, in cooperation with DES and Penachuk. The, the purpose of me coming this evening is, this was funded, the town's portion of this was funded under a grant agreement with the state of New Hampshire, and because the final paving and restoration work has to wait until the spring, so that the settling can take place in the, in the, in the asphalt, we need to extend the, the grant agreement, simply to allow us to, to do that into next year.
Okay. So I need a motion to extend the agreement. Looking for a date.
It'll, Mr. Chairman, the, the motion is to authorize me to apply, to submit a, to, to submit an amendment request to the state to extend the grant agreement until the end of next year.
So moved.
So moved, yep.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Next item. DPW Winter Operations Presentation. Want me to go to the next thing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And go to extended, extend Strategic Planning Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, this is the same issue. The Strategic Planning Grant is looking at the feasibility of a town-wide water system. We got, similar to the Lancaster Drive project, we got grant money from the state. We couldn't get going with this because there was a, a town funding component until the beginning of the fiscal year, and because that is a, a, a nine-month project from start to finish, it won't be done by the end of the year. The purpose of my request tonight is to obtain authority from you to submit an amendment request to the state to extend that grant agreement to the end of next year.
Accept the motion as stated.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Next item, Resolution 2022-18, a resolution relative to creating a municipal aggregation committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there was some discussion about this at the last meeting, and as Mr. Speltz touched on, we are under contract with Freedom Energy at the moment. They are in the process of preparing a municipal aggregation plan that, under state law, needs to be reviewed by a municipal aggregation committee and worked on by that committee. We, there was some discussion about the composition of that committee at the last meeting, and what we've, what I've settled on and present to you for consideration tonight, Mr. Chairman, is a municipal aggregation committee consisting of the town manager or designee, the superintendent of schools or designee, assuming that he is willing to do that, the director of public works or designee, the school district facilities director or designee, and the library director or designee, again, assuming that they're willing to participate. Those invitations have not been extended, because I don't have consensus from the town council. The last thing I would note is that the municipal aggregation plan needs to come back to the council for final approval. So this is really a committee that will do the, the work of getting this ready for you to make a decision on. And so what I'm looking for, Mr. Chairman, is a motion to constitute that committee as stated in the resolution and the attached committee charge, along the lines that I just outlined.
Any questions? I'll accept the motion to approve Resolution 2022-18. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Dave, you ready for your winter plan?
Please go ahead and get started.
Do I get a special one? Holy cow.
Thank you, sir.
Try this one on my feet. Again, good evening. Uh, my name is Dave Wally, Director of Public Works and Municipal Facilities. Uh, what I bring for you tonight um to take a look at is what our winter emergency operations plan will be for um the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three upcoming winter season. Um, it's been some time since the snow and ice policy, as it was commonly referred to in town, uh, has been updated and really gone through very thoroughly since two thousand and three, when it was first implemented. The first slide is is essentially what we're trying to prevent. We are, as uh the chairman pointed out at the beginning of the meeting tonight, um, we are considered um in 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 the state of New Hampshire is one of two states that recognizes public works officials as first responders. Uh, we're very proud of that. We take that with a very uh serious uh note. And uh we appreciate the chairman graciously pointing that out about being uh considered first responders. And and our kind of our charge is red and blue follow yellow. We say that with all due respect to the police and the firemen uh and whatnot that respond out there. Uh, but we understand um the importance of that. What that means is that if we are not uh doing our duties and diligently and efficiently and as quickly as possible in a safe manner, then uh the these can be some of the end results. Um, accidents like this can cause great financial hardship, uh upset livelihoods and 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 the potential possible loss of life is obviously um at stake here. So we take the charge very serious to make sure, uh, this is when we get our greatest exposure is in the winter months. Um, however, all year round, um, the uh the people in in yellow and in the orange trucks uh have a great deal of pride in making sure that all our roadways are safe, whether it's painting the lines, making sure traffic signals operate effectively, that water drains appropriately, so no one's hydroplaning and whatnot, and and the list goes on and on and on. Appropriate signage and stop signs, make sure that they're erected and in place. So um, those are the important functions of a of a of a well-oiled machine and a D P W. And I will say you uh that in the year that I've been here, plus uh thus far, you should be very proud of the uh the men and women that are working for this town and and for the uh D P W. They all are um highly skilled and very professional in nature and uh I I couldn't speak, I could speak all night about them, but I won't. Because uh the Yankees are are up and going, as I understand it, so we want to move this along. Um, so why is it important to have a a very good um, you know, snow and operational uh winter plan? For the for the obvious that I just stated, but there are other advantages to having that. Um, you know, as most people think, we plow so that the school uh schools can get off, which it obviously has a very impact on on many people's lives if uh school is is delayed or called. Traffic can uh, you know, obviously get you into work on time. Uh, deliveries are important businesses in town. And the other things that you don't think about, you know, there there's a lot of prescription drugs in the mail these days that are important, that that need to make it there on time. Uh, probably don't care about the bills in the mail much anymore, but uh, you know, holiday cards and whatnot, there are a lot of important items that people look for on that. And then uh just the the general overall uh things in life that we all look forward to and get a lot of uh uh joy out of gatherings, concerts, sports. Um, and then uh back to, you know, taking care of one another, hospice care and whatnot. And then everybody always wants to get their pizza delivery on time and uh other things that we we order through all the various uh forms of deliveries we have these days. So here's uh, you know, in the in the plan you have, it 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 gets a little bit more detailed than the first uh cover. But um essentially, this is what you have for town equipment. We have twenty-one pieces of of snow fighting equipment, uh with an average age of seven point six years. That is, that is good. Uh, but there is work to be done and when we get into the budget season and uh replacement of vehicles and stuff, we'll talk about that and some of the deferments that have occurred in the in the last few years. Um, we have uh three pieces of contracted equipment. But as these were being printed, um, we are in the throes of potentially not getting uh or securing those three contracted pieces of equipment. Uh, I did an analysis uh as I was doing even prior to um this revelation of of our of our current contractor. And um we have decided to, for the second year in a row, go up on our plow rates again for contracted equipment. Last year, we we increased uh to a neighboring community's price, so we wouldn't lose it to that neighboring community, and we did anyway on one piece. Uh, this year, uh, the remainder of the contractors' uh equipment, they've decided to go into the more lucrative private sector, which is always difficult to uh to to deal with and 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 compete against the private sector. Um, they pay much more lucratively than municipalities do. Um, but nonetheless, we we, again, we we plow for public safety, uh not so much that you can get in a parking lot of a store. Um, your available personnel are listed there. There are fourteen of us. That includes myself out there assisting as well. Uh, when things go wrong or 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 vehicles break down and what have you. Um, so when you see total nineteen plows, we're actually right now at the point of just only having sixteen. Um, so we are thin. Um, losing those three pieces uh makes us much thinner. Um, and again, I, you know, I say that with a great degree of um, you know, anxiety because, again, I do hold uh our snow operation um in very high regards to public safety, so that when those calls do come into the nine-one-one center, uh whether it's someone, you know, needing medical attention in their home, God forbid a fire. Um, you know, that's some concerns we have in the back of our head is energy costs are up, as we discussed at the beginning of the uh meeting. And so we're afraid that, you know, and as I'm sure if the fire chief was here, he'd probably resonate that people are probably going to get rather creative this winter on how they're going to heat their homes. Um, so, you know, if a fire truck needs to get to a fire, um, we want to make sure that they can do so in a safe manner and as quickly as possible.
Did you say you missed those three uh because of budgetary, like they took a bigger bid somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they haven't committed yet. They're still kind of tentatively thinking about staying with Lunandary, but right now we do not have a firm answer on that. I have put in a few calls to some uh other contractors where I had done previous business with to see if they're interested in um putting some pieces together and whatnot. Uh, if you've driven anywhere in New England right now, um, you know, out on ninety-three and whatnot, the state I think as of five years ago, they permanently have signs in front of all of their D O T sheds. Uh, I was in Massachusetts this past weekend. All of their variable message boards in Massachusetts are all looking for snow plow. Snow plowing is not a very um exciting business. It can be. Uh, but it it becomes blood money at some point, and so there it's becoming harder and harder and harder. And with all the commercial uh buildup and retail sectors in the area, they're gobbling up everybody that's available. So, and you know, plowing the the long hours that we do, uh because we don't stop. Uh, whereas, you know, perhaps if you're plowing for a business, you can take breaks and move on and whatnot, we don't have that luxury. So uh it's becoming more and more difficult to secure plow contractors. Just in a quick sho- snapshot, we have thirteen uh plow routes. Um, some of those uh pieces of equipment that are contracted were basically supplemental equipment to some of the routes. So in other words, we'd have one of our large six-wheelers and then one of their one tons would be with it to kind of help because they got a large route. Uh, as you see, we have a hundred and eighty-seven cul-de-sacs. It's hard to believe we have that many in town. Uh, that was a sticker shock for me there for sure, and forty-four dead ends as well. I list those because it's it's important to understand that when you have a cul-de-sac on a route or a dead end, it's time consuming. So it's not always just about lane miles, you know, humble, I only got nineteen lane miles. Well, if you have fifteen lane miles, but you have twenty-three cul-de-sacs on it, it's probably taking him the same amount of time, three to four hours, as it is the gentleman that has more lane miles on it. So it's not always a an equal um, you know, apple to apple comparison. So the nineteen pieces that we were, we were gauging this on at the time I prepared this presentation uh is an average of almost nineteen, uh twenty lane miles, excuse me. So I say lane miles, make sure we understand that's one one mile down the road, one mile back. Uh, there's two 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 sides of the road to plow. Um, for the predominant amount of roads that we have in town. Um, and that approximately takes us three to four hours, depending on the storm's intensity, the timing, is it a holiday? Uh, morning rush hour, evening rush hour, things like that. There's a lot of things that can that can impact how long it takes somebody to get around uh a route. There are other impacts that perhaps we don't always think about. We're always thinking about the trucks, get the trucks out there. Well, it takes a human being to run those trucks. Um, and as we just went through COVID, uh, that was a big concern for a lot of municipalities dealing with that. And, you know, if all of a sudden you have three, four, or five employees that are out with COVID or whatnot, um, then how were operations going to adjust to that? I will say that Lunandary almost followed the exact suit from where I previously came from, and it seemed like it was only one at a time. It was one guy, then the next guy, then the next guy. So you didn't have that large impact to your operation, which were benef- which were beneficial for. But uh but there are other things uh that come about. There's flu. Uh, people can get injured, uh, God willing that they don't. Uh, they, there are other things, you know, family members could pass on and they're out on bereavement. You can't very well sometimes ask a guy to leave, you know, his grandmother's funeral to come on in and plow. Uh, it's a difficult conversation to have. And other other types of uh lively things that can happen, and they're not there for us to plow, and we have to cover that route nonetheless. So again, those goes with some assumptions that we're fully staffed. Uh, we currently have a vacancy. We do have uh one offer out to a gentleman. Uh, it's looking promising, so hopefully as uh snow approaches, we will be at full staff. Um, that being said, um, you know, within the year that I've been here, this would be the fourth hire. So uh we got rookies. You know, we have people that uh need to learn their their trucks, they need to learn their routes, they need to learn other routes. Uh, and sometimes that's pretty difficult to do when it's dark out and it's snowing and it's it's icy and it's dangerous. And so your tendency is to go slower. So you can see sometimes that while I say a route may take three to four hours, it can sometimes takes four and a half, five hours. If you have a intense storm that is snowing at a clip of an inch an hour and you don't see a truck on your road for five hours, that's five inches of snow, um, potentially more. Um, so um, that's where it can get tricky because there's not too many vehicles uh that can that can accommodate in that in that manner. Um, that type of snow on the road. Um, there is no mutual aid. Um, fire departments and police departments, um, you know, if they have an incident going on that's significant in nature, they can often call communities around them, have them come help, uh, come come back them up, or bring in equipment that they don't have. We don't have that ability. When we're in the throes of it, everybody in the region's in the throes of it. So we don't have that ability to just call another town and say, can you send us over a few trucks? Uh, and this all goes with all the unknowns that can that can come up. Tree comes down, it was one last winter that come down, uh, that we had sent our way that we had to go deal with. Wires are down, uh, accidents, breakdowns on the trucks, uh, blown tires. Variety of things uh happen in the throes of a storm. It's not just put put the blaze in the truck, put them down and drive. Uh, I can tell you that I've been doing this uh now twenty-seven years, and there has never been any two snowstorms that have been alike. Uh, you know, they they don't just go off with a hitch and everybody goes out and plows and nothing goes wrong and everything's fine and uh and fine and dandy. So there's a lot of challenges uh to be to be said in that regard. So Lunandary has invested uh uh quite a bit of money in their equipment, uh, over three million dollars is put into those twenty-one pieces of equipment. That's replacement value on uh on our fleet as of right now. Um, and on an average, we use uh thirty-four hundred tons of sand. And you can see we have some budgetary challenges coming up by some of those numbers there. Um, we do on average spend, um, you know, we're not budgeted for what we're what we're typically looking at spending. Uh, we did make some improvement on the salt line last year by increasing it twenty thousand dollars. I think that was a step in the right direction. And um just, you know, you probably see more of that uh that talk coming up in this year's budget rounds. Um, and just to give you an idea, I mean, a lot of people will say, well, why don't you do more salt? I mean, salt obviously does uh a lot better than sand. Uh, sand has absolutely no melting ability whatsoever. Um, and despite everybody thinking it has more traction, it actually does not. It really doesn't. The moment you put it on the, put it out on the road, uh, it's it's almost with, almost useless within moments. As soon as the first few cars hit it, drive over it, you you've crushed off all the angular edges of of sand and it's uh basically marbles you you've thrown on the road. Nonetheless, um, in certain circumstances, if you have good sunlight and whatnot, um, it does does provide a little bit of a melting effect if the sand can can warm up enough. There are other costly challenges. Fuel has gone up. Uh, literally everything that we work with has gone gone up. Plow, cutting edges, equipment, parts. Everything has gone through. Last year, we saw a thirty-eight percent increase in salt. Uh, this year, it it leveled out a little bit. I believe it was uh between two and three percent uh increase on the cost of salt. We're we're paying roughly on average about, I think it's eighty-eight dollars a ton for salt right now. So, but I will, I I will say this, um, again, um, public safety is is number one uh on our mind. And we're not going to make a decision to not go out and put out a round of salt because, as you can see, it costs eighty-three hundred dollars just to go out and put salt, just for the salt. That doesn't include the labor, that doesn't include the fuel we're burning and the wear and tear of the equipment and whatnot. Um, if salt is the right choice for the right moment in the in the operation, then we put the salt out. Um, it has to be done. The the budgetary challenges and whatnot can be all dealt with after the fact. Um, just to give you a a stack up of how we compare to other municipalities. Um, and I kind of ran a slate of, just so that you can see some of the larger cities that are in and in and near us. Um, how many lane miles they have, uh, how many pieces of equipment do they have fighting it? Um, you'll see some are, in in our size, are fairly close to um how many pieces of equipment we have. Considering the types of traffic that they have in their in their town. And uh Manchester was actually quite, uh, I was quite shocked at 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 how little pieces of they have. And then there are some that are fairly excessive with seventy-five, but there's a a different type of mentality from my previous place. So, uh, but nonetheless, we do have uh nineteen, and when you look at that on the average per lane mile per piece of equipment, um, you can see that we were pretty well up there, uh, exceeding what some other municipalities have um for equipment. And so, again, I say that, you know, tongue in cheek because, you know, some municipalities may not have as many cul-de-sacs, so they can go a little bit quicker and whatnot. Some municipalities have a lot of gravel roads. We do not. So we we are fortunate in some areas that others aren't. So it's not a, you know, again, apples for apples comparison, but when you wonder if you drive through other communities and you're travels and you're like, well, how do they go faster? How do they do it? Why is their road seem better than ours or whatnot? Or perhaps why are their roads worse than ours? You you kind of get a little bit of a glimpse into um why why it is the way that it is. I will also inform you too, you see the top, that we do average about seventy inches of snow for our area. The last three winter seasons, and I keep thinking, well, this is the year we're going to get hit. This is the year we're going to get hit. We've been averaging about fifty inches of snow. So um while in the year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, that winter, we received a hundred inches of snow. It seems like, you know, millennia ago. Uh, but my fear is, is that if we even get back to the seventy inches or seventy-five inches of snow, then most people are going to feel like it's Armageddon because the last three winter seasons have actually been, you know, quite manageable. Um, we haven't had uh any real hard blizzards uh to speak of. And last winter, uh, if if a lot of you recall, we didn't really plow as much, but we had to salt a lot. Because last winter, we had a great deal of events that was started as rain, went over to snow, mixed in with some sleet, ended up going back to rain, you know, turning back into snow in the in the evening. So when you're dealing with ice, there's only one thing that works. It's salt. Plain and simple.
How do you, how do you guys make that call? What what time, I mean, sometimes you must be in the middle of the night making those phone calls too, right?
Absolutely. Uh, that and 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 driving. We're out there, we're on the road, we're observing. Yeah, we're, we've, we've got, uh, well, yeah, we've, we've got our two-way radios, we've got our 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 phones. We have a uh an onboard consultant as well. We do have our own in-house um radar. Uh, we converse with, sometimes with other towns, hey, what are you seeing there? What's what's going on? The storms, subtly tracking storms coming up, you know, what are you seeing down south of us before it gets to us? But a lot of it is visual. Um, you know, you can, you it can be raining in one end of Lunandary. Lunandary is, you know, pretty vast in in its span. It can be raining and and we did have one event last year where down south, we we didn't even do anything. Uh, but the Mason Dixon line, if you will, was kind of right there at at one oh two and and one twenty-eight. And and everything this way, we had to do some some treatment. So it it can vary. Again, no, no two storms are alike, but we did do uh quite a bit of salting last year due to the types of precipitation that we received. Um, you know, quite often, sometimes it's easy to just plow a ten-inch snowstorm, be done, deal with it and and go to bed. Uh, clean it, scrape it a little bit better the next day, um, and what have you. But when you're dealing with ice, it can be, you can get cold spots and on certain roads, and other roads are just fine. They have more sunlight, uh, so they warm up more in the day, and other areas are shaded and and the grounds, ground temperature stays cold. So that ice is very, very tricky and difficult to deal with. Uh, but great question. And so um I've answered some of those questions along the way, but basically, um, that's the plan in front of you. I do want to thank uh Amy Kizak. I do want to thank, uh, Amy Kizak, uh, the GIS manager. Uh, she was instrumental in the, um, the, the, the maps that you see at the back, uh, that break up and, and kind of segment out exactly how long each road is, how many cul-de-sacs and dead ends. A lot of the stuff I, I counted by hand, but then she confirmed through some of that stuff too, uh, through the system. And, and there were some things that she, she didn't, didn't know, uh, were there and, and so we worked on that. So it was great. We went through it with a real fine, uh, tooth comb. Um, and you'll see in the, uh, operation sheet too, you'll see the years of experience for each employee and the, um, season that the vehicle is going into as well. You'll see that we, like I said, we have a couple of guys that are going to be in their rookie year to be determined. Well, if the gentleman gets hired onboard, um, then his name will plug in there. And some of the other things that we updated, um, again, when the snow and ice policy was drafted in 2003 and adopted, um, there was no mention of, you know, using liquid brine and liquid chemicals and things of that nature. Um, we weren't dealing with mailboxes like we do now. Uh, and there's a, a few other things that, um, I just felt it was relevant, like social media updates and things of that nature that, uh, people can get information on how operations going.
I, I, I think, um, first I wanted to say that this is like outstandingly. This is one of the things I'm going to actually put on, you know, my, my library because as a reference tool, I mean,
Yep.
it, it's unbelievable. It's got so much in it, um, that I wonder about as a, you know, running the town. We, we always think about these things, but never have a guide like this. So, um, you know, the, the mailbox thing I think is really probably useful to put up on the website.
Yeah, the whole document will be on the, on the DPW website page.
I would say, I mean, for people to know about how far it needs to, we always get that question. It's like 12 years, we've got one person asking, how do I not get my mailbox knocked over? You know, this is how, you know, so, um, no, great. This is great. Appreciate the, the effort. Lots of effort put into this.
Thank you. Um, you know, and just, just to reiterate a little bit more too, you know, if, so if a truck breaks down, our mechanics are out, they're plowing. So if a truck breaks down, you know, sometimes we have to have a mechanic come back. Um, Paul's a great foreman and he does a lot. He's out, you know, checking on the roads. Uh, that's why I'm out there with him as well. Sometimes we have our assistant foreman out plowing as well. He has to assume a route. So there's a lot of teamwork that is involved with this. Uh, guys will come back, they'll jump out of their truck, jump in or load or try and load, you know, give themselves another load of, uh, material to get back out. And so, you know, when you're this thin, you know, you always, you always want to keep the, the, you know, keep hitting the brakes. Because the last thing you want is somebody to slip, getting out of their truck, fall, hit their head and now, you know, you, you've lost a person. Uh, it only complicates matters. So I think the guys do a great job. I learned a great deal, uh, last winter, you know, working side by side with the crew. And, uh, you, you all should be very, very proud of, of how hard they all work. I can say that.
I saw you listed on one of the trucks in there.
I guess I am. I, I, you know, that's, that, perhaps I don't have to be. I know that's new. Um, but I just think that it's important to, to be there with the team. So.
No, it's great. Thank you, Dave.
Good job, Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. All right, one of my, I'm up to, um, Sister City?
Thanks, Dave.
Deb?
Um, thank you. So a while back, we dissolved, um, our relationship with the, uh, the Russian Sister City. And I was broached, um, by Carla Diaz who had gone with Linda, um, over to Ireland to meet with them. And then when I recently did the trolley for the old home day, um, Linda was on the train and she said, wouldn't, I have a relationship with the, I guess, mayor or counselor over in Ireland and since we don't have a sister city, wouldn't it be nice to open up that door or that relationship with them? And Linda is here and, and would like to talk to us in regards to adopting, um, Lunendary, um, Ireland as our sister city and, um, maybe even invite them here to, um, visit with us in Lunendary again. So if you wouldn't mind. Huh?
We get to go there on a field trip?
Are you paying?
Sure.
All right then. You heard that everyone. Joe's paying. Uh, so if you wouldn't mind stepping up and just, uh, explaining how excited they are over the air of connecting with us over here. Thank you.
I'm Linda Harvey. I live at 11 Avery Road. It was really exciting to carry that proclamation from you folks to Northern Ireland in April. It was, it was a real joy and, and they were so excited to get that. Um, these people that I brought it to had come here in 2019 when our church and the, uh, the city of Derry celebrated the 300th of our mutual, our churches and also the city, of course, the town of Lunendary. And I suggested to them, wouldn't it be fun if we had a sister city here? And they loved the idea. Um, my friend over there, Michelle Knight McQuillan, she comes from Achadui in Ireland, Northern Ireland. Um, she was the mayor of the council, the Causeway Coast in Glens, um, last year and is now a town councillor there. And she said that there's a lot of enthusiasm there for adopting a sister city or sister town here. Now, it's a little more complicated than just having a town in Lunendary, New Hampshire and a town of Lunendary, Northern Ireland because of their very convoluted form of government. But it's County Lunendary there. Um, the Causeway Coast in Glens is the next level down. That's a council. The Ban Electoral District encompasses the, the four cities or the four towns there, which were Achadui, Vovidi, Muskoguan and Arteclave. Those are the original towns that the people from Ireland came in 1719 during the Ulster Migration. But they would love to have a sister city relationship with us. So.
So I, I just wanted to see if the council would like to take this to the next step and formally, um, open that door uh, to that connection to them and, 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 and welcome them. So I don't know. It's up to you guys.
I think we need to do some investigation about, um, the history behind it first, so everyone understands, you know, who came here. You know, and I know we have people here in town who can tell us that. Who came here from Lon- Lunendary, Ireland? Um, you know, and start building synergies and see if there is something there to have a discussion about. People also left here and went to Lunendary, Nova Scotia. You know, um, and started a community there. So there is a, there is a very long detailed history there of those, those settlers. So it'd probably be a good idea if we could, if we're going to open a relationship, let's figure out what the relationship is. You know, who came here from Lunendary, Ireland and, you know, we've got to know that. It's got to be somewhere in our, in our historic things.
Have a lot of that history.
And we don't have to do it tonight, but let's get that information. So that, so we can be educated and then, you know, if we're going to go down this path, at least we, at least we did a little homework.
Yeah.
Of course. I would encourage everybody to learn about our mutual history. I think it's, it's really exciting to have that.
Take a walk through the cemetery sometime.
Yeah, I've done that.
Mr. Chair, what is the process after we get that information? What is the process?
I don't know. We're going to have to figure that out. We haven't done a sister city in probably 30 years.
Thank you.
So we're going to have to go check that, figure out what to do. Interesting idea.
Appreciate your enthusiasm, sir.
All right. So folks, we have, we have a committee interviews here. So I got, I have budget committee interviews and I've got energy task force. Those that, you know, those that you are here for the energy task force, you were sent an email by the, uh, by the town's admin, letting you know that we already know if the task force was going to continue forward or not. And as you saw from a presentation earlier tonight, I'm not sure whether, you know, whether it's going to continue in its same way. It's going to be something else. He also explained to you that we may or may not interview. I'm going to leave that up to the council. Or we may or may not be appointing people to a task force that may be dissolving. So I, I think we have a workshop at our next town council meeting, which will determine, you know, where we're going to go with that. But I'll leave it up to the council with what you want to do about the energy task force, um, interviews.
Are these two people here?
There are some people here. I can, there's some people I can, you know, I can see, um, Ann back there and Janice just got up to speak, so.
Um, well, I just wanted to say, I, we didn't finish what we set out to do. Um, that was our halfway. We felt we had to present something to the council, um, by September, which we couldn't get done um, because it was very hard getting the documents. We, as the energy committee, did not, um, finish on the school side unless you just want to let that information fall. But we have had, um, meetings, several members had taken time to sit down and do interviews and collect documents. We have that information. We have not been able to put that together, um, yet for the energy, um, task force, which is the key component to this, is to have both the town and school data because of, uh, numerous reasons. And it is important to get this information for the school, doing your facility studies and moving forward with your project, knowing that if this is something that the town really wants to look down, they may decide to go with, instead of oil burners, electric burners, which would be covered under, um, which would reduce that whole cost right there. So we didn't finish. Um, we just wanted to make sure we got you information so that you knew that we were moving forward and that we were doing our job. So that's my, um, summary of what was going on in that, um, task force.
Okay. Yeah, and technically these should have come through and been, if we were looking for new members, it should have been posted and not just, yeah, should have went through the process, but it didn't go through the process, but that's neither here nor there at this point. What do you all want to do? Because these, I mean, these people are here. They probably deserve an interview. What do you all want to do?
Yeah, I think they're here. They have to be heard, you know.
All right. You want to forego the appointment for now of Mr. Breslin and do the interviews?
Yes, please.
Okay. If the budget committee people don't mind, we're going to do the, um, energy efficiency interviews, um, first, if that's okay. Um, I have, um, my first person is Ann. Hi, Ann. How you doing?
Good evening. Good.
Uh, we've talked before. I don't really, um, so if, if there's anything you would like to make an opening statement about, but, you know, we've chatted before and everything and I'm very familiar with your background. It's, it's impressive to say the least.
No, thanks. Um, let's see. The only thing that, that I would suggest is that, um, I'm very interested in looking at that energy audit report that came out in 2009 because I think when the gentleman said that there, there's a lot of low hanging fruit. There probably is.
Do me both.
Yep. Um, we actually, when I was at EPA, we used to conduct energy audits with, uh, GSA, General Service Administration folks. And, and we did it at, with other federal facilities, federal agencies. We'd go to those offices and do those audits. Um, we also did a lot of work on green buildings and held green building conferences. Um, and worked, did a lot of what we call pollution prevention audits. And it sort of comes naturally. I have to say, I was with the leadership group the other night and started asking questions about, so what do you do with your oil water separator? And how does this work? And how does that work? So you sort of skip right back into your audit, uh, inspection mode. Um, but I think this is, uh, a, a great area. I think we can do probably a lot for Lunendary. I think, um, I was talking with your new police chief about, uh, electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles for a police department. So I think there's a lot of room for growth and help.
Trent, any, any other questions for Ann?
No.
No, I, I just think you'd be a perfect part of this, uh,
Absolutely.
committee because of your background. Thank you so much for stepping up and offering your wisdom for us. It's great.
Sure.
No, Ann, thank you for continuing to want to get involved in things. It's very much appreciated.
Oh, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
I think we're, we're not going to do anything tonight, but I, I, I think we've both expressed that we're pretty impressed with what you bring to the table.
Alrighty.
Uh, Janice? Janice, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
So, um, usually we like, we let people make an opening statement if that's what they would like to do before we would ask them any questions. If you're comfortable with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and let you do that.
Um, maybe just a basic introduction. You guys already met my mother.
Yeah.
My family's been here for a very long time, um, and I have a lot of enthusiasm in particular for the green energy sector. It's kind of a, um, a pet hobby interest of mine. Uh, my current trade is I'm a project manager. I'm project manager right now for commercial lighting. I've done project management for small, um, manufacturing engineering projects and previous before that medical device certification. Um, that was about five years. So, um, I have a associate's in paralegal if anybody's interested and a bachelor's in business. Yeah, that's me in a nutshell. I'm a cap tan.
Any, any questions for Janice?
Oh, thank you. Thanks for stepping up.
How many openings do we have?
There were, um, three. Right when we started, somebody, um, said they couldn't do it.
Yeah.
And that was Ken Foley, I think.
Yeah.
And we had put it up to, and then I got like a ton of people wanted to be on the committee.
Yeah.
And it was the summer. And then, um, Rick, um,
Darvo.
Darvo, thank you, had some medical issues. He still wants to come to the meetings and participate, but he can't be on the board. And that was just recently. And then, um, uh, Sue Foley told me with her job and the new hours she has, she can't make the meetings.
Okay.
So we had had put this out. We had already had people apply. Actually, there were a bunch of them. Um, some of them could no longer participate. These people actually kept coming to the meetings and so I pushed them forward and asked the board. We asked everyone what they thought and so that was kind of how the, the committee got to where we were with these guys. And, you know, we did do a lot of research in the electrical cars, like Ann said. We've been following up with that and where that status is. There is a lot more work that really would benefit this town that needs to be done. Um, and I think it benefits departments to know what's going on and where this, you know, it's not huge amounts of money, but it's substantial. And, um, they seem to be very passionate about the whole committee itself. And I, I don't know the process actually. I think that the, the task force should be looked at becoming a permanent committee um, for the town, constantly checking as things change, technology changes, making sure that we're, I mean, maybe they don't have to meet every month, but I think that they should be on top of it and making recommendations to different departments is what we could save money on. Uh, I think it's important. And so I, I don't know what that process is to go from a task force to an actual committee. Um, it, it could, that could be a very good resource for the town and the school both. So I don't know that process.
So we have two alternate openings?
We have two alternate and one full-time.
Okay.
So.
Ray was an alternate and so.
Are, are we good with Janice or do you want me to?
I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
Janice, thank you for your patience.
Okay. But does that mean when, uh, if, if Ray was to become a full member, is that open up another alternate?
No.
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 So there's one right now.
All right, well, let's take this up in our workshop, see where that goes and then we'll decide what we're going to do.
Just want to make sure. Okay.
Okay. So as I'm looking around the room, Lynn, are you the only one here? I think you're the only one here. I don't see John Gogley.
He was here before.
He was? Rob Gallin. Okay, so Lynn, it's all you. See, Lynn's used to staying late.
Yeah, 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 I was going to say.
I'm not sure if I like it, right?
Lynn knows. Nobody, nobody likes it.
Uh, good evening, everybody. My name's Lynn Wiles. Uh, we live at 46 Bartley Hill Road. Been a member, a resident of Lunendary for 35 years now, so. Um, just a little bit of background. I retired last year, 2021. So I do have a little bit of time on my hands to volunteer and I do enjoy volunteering for the town, doing various things. Uh, in my last, or the last number of years of my career, I was responsible for developing budgets, department budgets, uh, for, uh, various contracts that we were, we were working on, ranging in size from, you know, $25,000 up to $16 million for the largest contract that I was responsible for. Uh, the, the development of the budgets included, uh, labor costs, any capital equipment costs. Um, and then unfortunately, it also included having to do variances when we didn't meet our cost targets as the contract was executed. But, uh, so, so I have a fair amount of, uh, experience with budgets and managing budgets and understanding, uh, what they're made of. Um, the main reason I threw my name in the hat is I saw the opening. I know budget season's coming up. And I really didn't want the, the budget committee to go into budget season short-handed. I thought it was important to get my name out there and, uh, you know, if the council determines that I'm the right person for it, I'm happy to step up and, uh, you know, support everything that the budget committee does.
Anybody have any questions for Lynn?
No.
I've known Lynn.
Yeah, we all know.
I don't have any questions.
No, neither do I.
I, I appreciate you stepping up though, especially in the, where the void is there and kind of plugging the hole. That's, that's.
And season's starting next month, if I'm not mistaken.
Buckle in.
It's right there, so.
With your expertise, I'm sure you could help a lot, so.
Happy to help.
Well, we don't, we have, we won't have another meeting until after we already have the budget presentation. We won't have another meeting until after we already have the budget presentation. The other two candidates don't appear to be here.
I would like to make another point, that Lynn's the only one who said he could make three meetings in a month out of the other candidates who applied, which is pertinent, I think, because there is more than three meetings.
Interesting, very interesting. Yep. To go into the budget season, definitely more than three.
Yep. Luckily, my schedule's pretty flexible at this point in my life, so I can support.
Make a motion to the budget committee.
Second. So, a motion and a second. Those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. See the town clerk will be sworn in.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn.
Congrats, Lynn.
Okay, liaison reports. Anything new to report?
Yes. I would like to report a very, very successful expo, our first annual senior resource committee expo. We had about 165 guests that come in. We had about 32, 33 vendors, if you will, come in, only three or four that didn't show up, which was really, really good. It was a beautiful day, lots of people in and out. You know, special thanks to Debbie DeRozia, I mean, and our new police chief. He really drove things home for us. I mean, the whole committee was really outstanding, frankly. But I just wanted to point out that I appreciate everybody's support. I think I saw all of you there, which was really great. And much more to come. We have lots and lots of ideas that sprang from it. A lot of things that we could do collaboratively across towns, collaboratively across, even with state programs that we discovered through this process, so it's been great. I really appreciate the support of the council. Little traffic issues there. We'll make a notation not to do it on a Patriots.
They worked themselves out.
A Patriots game and then during the ballgames, yeah. Considering those, it was very successful. Thank you.
Sounds like it worked itself out. Okay. Anything else? Town manager report.
Mr. Chairman, I'll keep this as brief as I can tonight. I will have a October's town manager report, formal town manager report for you at our next meeting. We are in a moderate drought, so the drought seems to be receding. That was as of this past week. I'm happy to implement any action the council may want to take on the drought restrictions, if any, at this time.
I think we're good on the drought.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, two items. One is, you know, it's been since June that we passed the commercial industrial tax exemption program. And frankly, there's been, I would say, a handful of developers where it's been a convenient talking point for me, trying to highlight some of the benefits of coming to town. Nobody's taken advantage of the program yet. And I suspect it has something to do with, one, the high cost of admission, which, as you will recall, is $15 million. And two, I think more significantly at this point in time, the state of the economy, interest rate, risk, inflation, and all of those other headwinds that everybody's experiencing right now. All of which are just making it that much harder to develop projects, particularly of scale and significance in Londonderry, but everywhere, frankly. And so, I raise that because nothing is set in stone. And if there is interest in expanding the eligibility or the availability of that program at this point in time, I'm happy to work with you to craft something that might help facilitate development where it's a little bit tricky right now.
Everything's always worthy of a discussion. Doesn't mean we'll change or do anything different, but everything's always worthy of a discussion.
Very good.
Agreed.
I'll come back at our next meeting with some options.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
You had a second item?
I do, Mr. Chairman. So, the council in May of last year passed authorization for a TIF district on the east side of I-93 in the Woodmont Commons area. And at that time, I think the expectation was that we were on the precipice of work really starting over there. And that did not immediately happen, as you know. And so, we do have this, I guess I would call it a skeleton TIF program that is technically in place with respect to the east side of I-93, the 230 acres that comprise the Woodmont Commons area. Nothing's been done with that TIF. It's sort of just hanging out there and.
Is there any framework of a development agreement?
It's, there's really not beyond what was passed accompanying the resolution, which was very bare bones.
So, traditionally, when we do a TIF, we have a, we're working on a development agreement at the same time?
Correct. That did not happen here and it has not happened, although I think that, you know, those discussions are about to resume, given all the work that's happening over there. I could tell you that I consulted with the town's attorney and the advice that I got was it's really not a good thing to have kind of this skeleton TIF just floating around out there.
We never keep them open like that.
Correct. We do not, is my understanding. And so, my suggestion based on that advice is that the council rescind Resolution 2021-10, which created this TIF, so that frankly, we can work with the developer on a new plan to develop that site. So, rescinding, just to reiterate, rescinding the TIF resolution that was adopted more than a year ago does not foreclose that. In fact, those discussions are continuing. But it is, it is not a good thing to just have it out there.
Is the town attorney recommending that we take this up as the next agenda item? Or is he recommending we move on this immediately?
His advice was it could be taken up this evening, but if the council was uncomfortable with that, it could certainly be deferred until the next meeting as well.
We wanted to, well, usually you can have the document to sign and everything, right? Get it up.
Usually you have a document to sign and everything else.
Read it.
Deferred to the next meeting.
Yeah, we don't, when we rush into things, we make mistakes, right?
Then let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting. It sounds like what I'm hearing.
I will.
Okay.
And Mike, if you could give me a copy of that.
Certainly.
Alright, so, we have, we have a fiscal '24, or to believe, fiscal '24 budget workshop on November 5th at 9:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. We have a town council meeting on November 7th. We have peppered in a few other council meetings here before Thanksgiving because I am anticipating that we are going to be having some difficult discussions during the budget workshop. Just for the council for understanding, we have been trying to hire in positions across the municipality in all departments, police, fire, public works, staffing, clerk's office, all the offices, library. And it's been very difficult to hire. In some departments, we have anywhere between three and 12 positions open and funded. We're going to have to have some serious conversations about whether or not we're going to continue to ask the taxpayers to continue to fund those positions. Some of them are going to be difficult conversations because some of those conversations are about first responders. And in no way, let me be clear, in no way are we looking to, you know, defund any type of first responders or anything along those lines. We just don't have candidates. And we're going to have to have a discussion about that as the council is like, "What are we going to do about that?" Because we can't go along funding a million dollars' worth of, you know, of employees and have nobody to hire.
We, I think we've adopted a few years ago, too, I mean, it's going to be five, 10 years ago even, that we want to make sure that the budget meets the expenditures as close as possible and not have that fat out there. So, that would be tightening that up.
Well, they're going to be difficult discussions. So, I'm putting it out there now. I've already started, you know, having conversations with people that are in those departments, asking them for ideas or asking them to send their friends here because these are going to be difficult discussions. And in no way are we looking to cut services in the town. We just can't hire anybody. As an example, when we had a police officer, one position for a police officer open, you know, eight to 10 years ago, we would get 100 to 150 applicants. We're now lucky if we get five. Five would be a high number. So, be prepared to have these discussions. They're not going to be very comfortable. With that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, we didn't approve the minutes from last meeting, I don't think.
Oh, did I skip over that? Thanks. I appreciate that. I'll accept the motion to, oh, yeah, I was trying to take care of those first with appointments. Thank you. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for October 3rd, 2022, as presented. Those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain, one exception. Chair votes in the affirmative. The minutes are approved. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor, just simply by saying aye. Good night, ladies and gentlemen.